Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Eugene Water and Electric Board's November 2020 meeting. We are having the meeting one day earlier than we normally do in honor of the once every four-year presidential election, which everybody knows is tomorrow. I want to thank staff in particular for answering questions that commissioners had prior to the meeting in a hurry, just a day or so before. And I also want to recognize that this is the penultimate meeting, as I was recently informed, for Commissioner Helgeson and myself. With that, we will open it up to our agenda. The first item on the agenda is the agenda check itself. Does anybody, the five commissioners, or Frank Lawson or General Manager, have any concerns about the agenda as published? All right, well, hearing none. Before we move on to the next item, I just want to mention for the 20-plus folks who are on the line right now that I'm having some connectivity issues this evening. Hopefully, it doesn't disrupt things too much. If it does, I've asked our Vice President Mindy Schlossberg to take over, and if that also fails, Commissioner Helgeson will take over until the two of us can return. Hopefully, we won't have too many disruptions. All right, well, we'll move on to the second item, and that is items from board members and the General Manager. Commissioner Schlossberg, we'll start with you.
All right. The only thing I have to report this month is that President Mattel, Frank, and I met with the City of Eugene for our quarterly meeting. There were no action items or anything that came of that. It was, again, still in that relationship-building phase, I believe, and just sharing what was going on with the city and what's going on with E-Web. So that is it.
Commissioner Carlson, you're next.
I wanted to mention that I had a chance to go upriver and see some of the really painful destruction that happened up there, and I'm very, very thankful for what we voted on last month to help clean up. Just seeing it firsthand and seeing how close some of those properties are directly to the river and the amount of material that's remaining there, I think it was the right thing to do. So I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for supporting that and for staff for putting that together. I think that was really a good move on our part. Thank you.
Commissioner Helgeson.
Just three quick things. One is that I agree with Commissioner Carlson on her just-made point, although I was one that had expressed some reservations last time, voted in favor, and on reflection, find it to be the right thing to do as well. I also appreciated the opportunity I had over the weekend to walk the Elliott site once again with a couple of the neighbors up there that we'll be hearing from in public input tonight. So I look forward to hearing from them and appreciated that opportunity, and maybe we'll have a chance to comment once we hear from them. And then, lastly, there's a teleconference board meeting of the NWPPA Board on the 18th to discuss budgetary issues. They're on a calendar-year budget, and things are obviously kind of sideways with COVID continuing, and that certainly affects their business model in terms of their training program and revenues, although they've seen a pretty robust registration and teleconference-type trainings. It's not going to be a good year for them next year. I suspect that could have some implications for dues, but would remind us all that there hasn't been a change in their due structure or their assessments in all the time that I've been on their board, which is six or seven or going on eight years now. And they actually gave us a little bit of a rebate last year, so I'll try to report out on that or send out an email to Frank on what the upshot is there once that meeting takes place on the 18th. But don't be surprised if there's some upward tick in their assessment for next year, and I would hope that if that's the case, that you could support that, given the history and the circumstances we're in. They've been using reserves to basically cover that to this point, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Well, I'll jump in real quick, and John, you get to go last, and I'll head over to Frank after that. So like Commissioner Carlson and Commissioner Helgeson, I also want to express my thanks to staff, Carl Morganstern in particular. I don't know if he's on the call tonight, but to an extent, I suppose I owe him a little bit of an apology. I came out pretty hard, scrutinizing the budget request last month and the work that he was planning to do with his team and mobilizing them really quickly, but I've not had a chance to go up there personally yet, but I have seen some of the media reports in The Guard and elsewhere, and just from the pictures I've seen and the comments I've heard from folks, it's absolutely the right thing to do. So I'm glad we overcame whatever reservations I expressed, and it feels very much like the right thing to do. So good work to everybody involved. Also wanted to just say briefly that I had a call with my counterpart over on the sub-board. John DeWinter is there, current president, and we had a discussion about the possibility of E-Web and SUB exploring some joint upriver source water protection work as we begin to move potentially over into the Willamette watershed, and as they begin to move over more heavily into the McKenzie, there's some interest, at least on my part and his, in having our staff look at ways in which they could work together and also be clear about what intentions they have for source water protection in the respective watershed. So he's in the process of putting a draft MOU together that would kind of describe, not MOU, but just a board resolution that both boards could sign perhaps in December. You'll all have the chance to see that prior to the December meeting, but the hope is that we could sign something in December and give the staffs a few months' time to work together to see what they could come up with, similar to the four resolutions that were signed, looking at source water treatment on the two rivers as well. So more to come on that. Just a brief heads up at this point in time, based on the conversation that I had with John DeWinter about a week ago. John Brown.
Oh, thank you. Couple items. Number one, I left the meeting abruptly last time. It wasn't by anything anybody said or did. It was because Mr. Wizard here doesn't understand what the little blinking light is, and that means your battery's gone, and I couldn't get it going. I had a panic attack, but nothing happened. So I apologize for the way I left the meeting last time, but not getting a wrap-up. The other thing is that the governor's appointed what's called the Oregon Wildfire Economic Recovery Council, and I've heard input from a lot of people upriver that they're very appreciative of the quality of the people they appointed, but they haven't appointed anybody that lives in the area that was affected, even though there's people there that are qualified and willing. And I don't know if E-Web has any input or pull on that or anything, but I think it would make sense to have somebody that lives up there on that Economic Recovery Council to help direct and guide how that goes, because there's been a lot of lives impacted, as we all know, and so just wanted to bring that to the forefront. Thank you.
Frank, you have anything you'd like to add? And I think if not, we will move, in addition to, I should say, we can just move directly into... Sorry, I was thinking about the last couple of meetings. I'm sorry, where we had moved into a COVID update, but I can see that that's not part of the regular agenda today. Sorry about that. Go ahead.
Yeah, President Mattel, Commissioners, good evening. I will reserve most of my comments for the quarterly report later in this meeting. I will respond to Commissioner Brown's comment about the Wildfire Economic Recovery Council. I do have a call later this week with the Governor's Office, and I will explore how that council was formed and what opportunities there might be. So that's a pre-scheduled call, and I believe it's Wednesday or Thursday of this week. Other than that, I'll pass it back to you, President Mattel.
Alrighty. Well, we will move into public input. Let me read a required preamble, and then we'll introduce our speakers. So first off, let me open up public testimony and read the following statement. "When your name is called, remember to unmute your phone if you're on the line. Press *6 if calling from a landline, or simply use the unmute button if calling from your cell phone. Please then state your name and optionally your address or ward, and speak clearly into your telephone. Each speaker will be offered three minutes to present his or her testimony. Please keep track of time. If needed, the board president will notify you when your time has elapsed. After a testimony is heard, each commissioner has the opportunity to speak if he or she chooses, although by policy we do not engage in a back-and-forth dialogue. Please note that failure of a commissioner to speak shall not be construed as support of or opposition to any speaker's testimony. If a question is presented by a speaker and the board does not provide an answer, an E-Web staff member will contact the speaker so that the question can be addressed at a later time." Okay, with that, I believe we have potentially as many as six people in the queue today. And would you let me know, is Scott Roder there?
No, Scott Roder nor Stephen Anderson have joined the meeting yet. So first up would be Sandra Bishop, followed by James Porter.
Okay, wonderful. Sandra, why don't you go ahead and unmute your phone, and we'll be glad to hear your testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Good evening. This is Sandra Bishop. My address is 4096 Hilliard Street. Thank you for allowing me to address the board this evening. I'm here to draw your attention to the water tank project on Hilliard Hill here in South Eugene. I'm here to ask that board members take a more direct role in the siting decisions that are now being made as this legacy project moves forward. Please look carefully at what's happening with the project. It has come to my attention that staff is recommending clearing almost all of the mature fir pine habitat on the northeasternmost end of the site, which is a large 10-to-12-acre site. This is the area slated to be cleared for siting the first and second water tanks. With an acreage of this size, it's imperative that the board be clear that there are alternatives to where the first tank is situated on the property. Please don't be lulled into thinking the site is vacant, as stated on the E-Web website. It's true, there's no housing or commercial building on the site, but it's alive and vibrant as a refuge and habitat, and is used regularly by many people who bring their families, pets up here to experience some sense of nature in the city. It's home to an untold number of birds and different species and other species, and it contains legacy trees that were growing on this site, very likely when the city was founded in the mid-1800s. When you're looking at what the staff's recommending for siting the first tank at the extreme east end of the property, what you're looking at is destroying this mature fir pine habitat versus a concept of what might be created or enhanced for potential habitat elsewhere on the property. Please get the facts. Look at the details. Look at the age of the trees, varieties, species that are common to this habitat. Look at the actuality of what now exists and weigh that with the conjecture of what might be developed in the future as landscaping enhancements. So please look at the finality and totality of what you're doing here. What's being proposed is clearcutting the mature habitat in the guise of site preparation. There's no question that we need the water tank, but the question is, please look at how unnecessary it is to completely clear this habitat. There are nuances that need to be considered for a less damaging siting. Where to site the first water tank is not a mundane, everyday decision that should be left to engineers and staff. It's a highly charged political matter that affects a large saving of the population, as well as the development of the tank well. But a decision like this needs to be made by you as elected officials. So please, look at the data presented, but please do the least harm on this site. That's why E-Web for 50 years now has maintained a site with this much acreage. They knew they didn't need this much acreage. So now you've got the opportunity to adopt an attitude of being a steward, a caretaker, almost like a doctor. Please pledge to do the least harm.
All right, well, thank you, Sandra. I'm sorry, your time is past.
Specifically, please ask staff to come back to the board with a clear option of what it would take to site the first tank to the west of the heart of the mature habitat area on the easternmost edge. Thank you so much.
All right, well, thank you for your time. James Porter, if you will unmute your phone. Sandra, remember to remute your own. James, go ahead.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, this is James Porter, and I also live at 4096 Hilliard. Sandra Bishop's my wife. Anyway, our property is as close to the tank as any property in the surrounding area. I'm fine with the tanks. I understand their need, and even one quite close to our house, my concern is with the trees. And the proposed second tank, which is in the middle of the property, is my preferred location. It is the least impact on the forest. So someday, you may have to clear the big 250-year-old trees that are in the east end of the property, which is the target area for the first tank, if I understand what the staff is up to. So anyway, I would appreciate if the board would prevail upon the engineering department to shift their attention to the center of the property, and we'll deal with the large trees in 10 years or more. But in the meantime, we've got the benefit of some very beautiful large trees that were living there by themselves back when it was a oak savanna. Anyway, that's it. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for your testimony, James. And I believe that we have Joe Harwood on the line, who's going to read two statements. Before he does, is anybody else there live to speak for himself or herself?
No, no additional callers have joined.
Okay. Joe, why don't you unmute your phone and read two statements? I believe one's from, the first is from Will Rutherford, and the second from Chris Jones.
That's correct. The first is Will Rutherford of VIDA. "I'm certain that you've heard lots of appreciation for E-Web's responses to the Holiday Farm wildfire. With this short note, I'd like to personally add my thanks to E-Web for all of the positive efforts you have made to accommodate E-Web customers, those outside the E-Web service area, and the river ecology. The rebuilding of infrastructure along Highway 126 and Good Pasture Road was extensive. In my mind, your crews did an exceptional job of restoring power efficiently and safely. I appreciate that you deferred billing and adjusted the delivery charge to reflect the time that electricity was not available. Other E-Web accommodations include deferring discussion on rate adjustments, the waiving of temporary neater fees, site assessment for hazard trees, and assistance with hazardous waste cleanup and mitigation. It was impressive to see how E-Web quickly responded to the water source protection issue. I'm certain that previous work developing the source protection plan enabled immediate action. The efforts of Carl Morganstern and Nancy Toth, combined with Pure Water Partners, are helping many folks mitigate both runoff and riparian impact. I was personally involved with stabilization efforts on a complex property and lobbied the work done by Nancy Toth, Larry Liederman of the Upper Willamette Soil and Water Conservation District, and the contractor, Anderson's Erosion Control, to accommodate landowner schedules and assess constraints. I also note that E-Web increased the current budget for water source protection by over $1 million to enable quick and substantive wildfire response. Unfortunately, many river citizens beyond your service boundary may not appreciate how extensively E-Web has supported the cleanup, stabilization, and restoration efforts. This is because communications with the entire 40-mile upriver community is challenging. The E-Web website and E-Web newsroom are excellent. Although available to the public, your website is probably not frequently accessed by non-E-Web customers. There are many ongoing local efforts to expand community communication. This might be a topic for the next upriver meeting. In conclusion, again, I say thank you to E-Web for your efforts to support the McKenzie River community as it recovers from the destruction of the Holiday Farm fire." Okay. The second letter is from Christopher Jones of Kincaid Street. "This is a comment for the board and the General Manager about the revised Phase 1 electrification study included in the November 2020 board meeting materials. In its climate action plan, the City of Eugene has adopted a goal of a 50% reduction in fossil fuel consumption by 2030. Given the current slow growth in electric vehicle adoption in the United States, reaching that goal will require ceasing the installation of new fossil gas heating equipment, replacing nearly 100% of fossil gas heating equipment by 2030, and providing significant incentives for the purchase of electric vehicles, including heavy vehicles that are not, but should be, out of scope of this Phase 1 study. The scenarios evaluated in this study demonstrate an unwillingness to confront the straightforward math behind a 50% reduction in fossil fuel use in our community over the next 10 years. The scenarios are simply not aggressive enough. The baseline scenario should include 100% replacement of fossil gas heating equipment, along with an exponential path to 100% electric vehicles in our community by 2050. The latter path is implied by California's recent proclamation that all new vehicles must be zero emission by 2035. Given normal vehicle replacement rates and California's effect on the U.S. vehicle market, that restriction means that nearly all vehicles will be zero emission in 2050. I hope that Phase 2 of this study will include a baseline scenario that conforms with Eugene's climate action plan and with the best available scientific recommendations. The baseline scenario should include 100% replacement of fossil gas heating equipment by 2030, electric vehicle adoption rates that are well above Phase 1's high scenario, and aggressive replacement of electric resistance heating equipment with modern heat pumps in order to mitigate the increases in peak and average loads that would otherwise result from this rapid electrification. I have every confidence that E-Web, in partnership with the City of Eugene, the City of Springfield, Lane County, and neighboring utilities, has the expertise and will to implement the aggressive electrification that is needed to meet this important challenge." That's it.
All right, well, thank you, Joe. I'll just ask one last time, and since I can't see, has anybody else joined the call requesting to give testimony?
No, there's not.
All right, well, I'm going to close the public testimony and open up an opportunity for commissioners to respond. John Brown, I'm going to start with you today.
All right, thank you, and thank you for everybody that testified. And Sandra and James, I can understand your concerns and things, and I also know that you've asked that we get involved in siting of a reservoir, and that's, personally, I'm not going to get into the weeds. I understand the concerns. I know that E-Web goes to great lengths to address neighbors' concerns and protect the environment, and I'm sure that they're going to do what's right here. I would think on the counter that if we have trees that are 150 years old next to a reservoir, they would pose a hazard, because trees die from what's called root rot and other things like that, and you get a 150-year-old tree that falls on a reservoir, I know what it's going to do to it. So I'm sure that whatever the decision is, that it's going to be the right decision. We've all toured the site. I think we respect your concerns, and I think we'll do, at the end, we'll do what's right for the community and have the least amount of impact we can and still do what's the right thing. Regarding Joe's comment with Will, I would hope that maybe somehow either Steve and Mindy, or Frank, or somebody could do an op-ed or a letter talking to the community about what the effects have gone on upriver, what we're doing, and what we anticipate to do in the future, because it's not just a one-and-done with us. I think it's going to be, could be a decade-long restoration and recovery for there, and maybe we want to outreach to the community and let them know what we're doing, because I think he's right. Not everybody knows just exactly how involved we are, and I think it would be a good thing to do. So that's what I have. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Helgeson, would you like to go next?
Okay, thank you. I want to appreciate all of the testimonies tonight. Particularly difficult during these virtual meetings as compared to our normal protocols when we're able to meet in person, and so I just appreciate those of you that took the various options that were available to be with us tonight. I particularly want to thank Sandra and Mr. Porter for their testimony and the invitation that they made to have me tour the site with them over the weekend. I also appreciate E-Web staff, Laura Farthing, that was with us as well. And in reflecting on what I saw there and what I heard tonight, I just guess I wanted to make a few points. One is that we recognize this is a large and complex project that has a lot of impacts, and those are impacts that we're concerned with and that are going to be challenging, quite frankly, to balance as we move forward. I appreciate your acknowledgement of the importance and the critical nature of these new facilities, as it is really important that we replace all of our lower-level reservoirs over a period of time here. I wanted to tell you that I have a lot of confidence in our project team. We've got some of our best people on this team. We've got a project manager who not only is an experienced and capable engineer, but has a background in environmental studies and ecology, which serves us well in this case. I want to point out that their work is in progress, that they're nearing the end of some assessment that's been ongoing for a considerable period of time now, and I don't think it'd be a bad idea at all for them to come and report out to the board when they reach the conclusion of that phase of their work and kind of lay out for us and communicate more broadly through our communication plan the results of their work and the siting and sequencing of construction. But I have confidence in the folks that are doing this work, and I would be reticent, you know, at this point to jump in and try to second-guess or substitute my judgment for theirs. I feel like they've got the expertise and the consulting support to do the right work here under quite challenging and frankly, difficult circumstances, inasmuch as we're not going to be able to mitigate all of the impacts that we know are going to be associated with this construction. I think the main focus of our discussion over the weekend had to do with the sequencing of the two tanks that we've been looking to site. I wanted to make a couple of quick comments about that, and then I'll probably be out of time. First of all, I just want to clarify that we need both tanks. The reason they're sequenced is that we can't take all of our facilities out of service and construct the new ones all at once, and that requires a sequence over time. But the second tank will be needed in the timeframe envisioned, not to meet future growth, but to simply replace the existing capacity that we have. I suspect that both of those tanks will need to be nearly identical in size, shape, and configuration in order to work properly in the system. Principally, that means the top and bottom elevations of the tanks need to be the same, and we're going to need both tanks. I'm going to give you one example of why I think it would make sense, at least from a technical standpoint, to proceed with the tank number one or the more challenging of the tanks. This may be a little counterintuitive, but since both tanks need to be virtually the same with the same top and bottom elevations, there's a lot of earthwork associated with that first tank, which may be counterintuitive, but I recall when we did the tank at Hayden Bridge, which was a large tank requiring a lot of excavation, that we were not able during the design phase to fully anticipate all of the conditions, the geotechnical conditions that we would encounter as we did the excavation for that. And we, in fact, had to make some changes in our design and the configuration of that reservoir in order to accommodate what we found. And despite the fact that we'll do a lot of geotechnical work, there are some risks and unknowns associated with what lies below the surface on these rock promontories. and unknowns associated with what lies below the surface on these rock promontories. The problem with building the second tank first is that if we encounter things during the excavation for what would then be the east tank, the more difficult of the two, that require a change in design or elevation or location, you know, we could run the risk that we'd be locked in at that point, and we'd have some problems with the siding of the second tank. So I think there are some reasons why it makes sense to proceed as staff has proposed, but I think we're all still open to how that resolves as they complete their work and looking forward to hearing back from staff as that work concludes. So it's something I know we're all paying attention to, and I appreciate the testimony tonight.
All right, well, we'll move forward with Commissioner Carlson.
Great. Thank you for all that gave their testimony this evening or submitted it in various forms. Really appreciate that. I know it's difficult. I did also have the pleasure of going out there and viewing the site directly and wanted to take a minute to appreciate the attention that staff were giving to the concerns of the community and the citizens that have raised them. I really did feel like they were very much listening to those concerns and had developed a strategy of communication and also a way to process the site based on all of the different constraints that are out there. You know, it has to be at a certain height. It has to, you know, meet all of these different parameters. And I did appreciate that they were doing a sort of environmental study that incorporated information from the public on what kinds of animals inhabited the trees and looked at that. So it wasn't a requirement. It wasn't anything that we had to do necessarily, but I appreciated that it was something that staff were going through with and kind of gathering that feedback from the community on the types of animals that live there. Now, there will be impacts no matter where it's sited, but I do believe wholeheartedly that the staff that are there and involved in this project are trying their best to make the impact there as low as possible while still getting us the two tanks that we need to fulfill resiliency in the area and to, you know, replace the old tank that is falling apart. And so we're under very strict time constraints to get that replaced. And so again, I just, I really appreciate, you know, your concern and involvement and look forward to hearing more, you know, from staff and also from citizens as this project progresses. And then as far as, you know, the upriver work, I really do appreciate Will's insights and incentives or insights into the, you know, the various work that EWEB has done up there. I think the, one of the things that struck me was the, you know, just the clear impact from our board packet that staff had directly interacting with people who had been impacted by the fire. I mean, I can't, just seeing the level of devastation up there, that 20-minute drive was absolutely horrific. I mean, I can't even imagine. And so I'm, again, I'm just so thankful for all of the, all of the work that we've done up there and the ways that we are going to need to be up there and helping. And I actually do wonder if we are going to need more, a lot more work around the trees that are dead and up there that are going to pose a risk to all of the lines that we've now newly put up. So anyway, thank you again for all of the support and testimony during these challenging times.
Commissioner Schlossberg.
I think my fellow commissioners have captured my thoughts well, but again, just another thank you to everybody who provided public input. I know that we try to be as welcoming to the public as possible, and this format can be kind of intimidating and clunky. So thank you for persevering and either calling in or sending in testimony.
All right, well, and I'll round things out. I won't repeat some of the comments that other commissioners shared regarding the South Eugene kind of the water towers there. I generally am in support, other than to say that, as I expressed last month after visiting, I am fully supportive of the staff approach, which I think has been quite measured to try and accommodate both the city's needs but also the nearby neighbors. And I think even though that in the short term, it's going to be a little messy up there, no question about it, that's what construction is, that in the long term, you'll find that you have a really good neighbor ultimately in EWEB. So I know that probably doesn't feel too good to hear that right here and now, but I do believe that staff is doing the best they can to accommodate that need and has been very clear in communications regarding that. Will, I just wanted to say that you attend every one of our meetings, and so you know how infrequently somebody steps up to say thanks, and so we certainly appreciate when that happens and somebody takes the time to recognize the good stuff that EWEB staff do. So we'll certainly be sure to make sure that staff who are involved but not necessarily on the call tonight are aware of what you took the time to roll. Thank you very much. And Chris Jones, we will, I'll withhold any comments that I have about your particular statement until we get to that portion of the meeting. Hopefully, we'll have an interesting conversation about that at that time. Before we move on, I just want to say that our Board Secretary, Ann Carr, let me know that Stephen Anderson was also hoping to call in and give some testimony this evening but had some difficulty with the technology. And if you would let me know if Stephen had any luck getting through, we will reopen public testimony on his behalf.
Thank you, President Mattel. I just spoke to Mr. Anderson on the phone, and he said he was on hold, but I have not seen his call come into the meeting. I'm not sure what's happening, but I do not see him as of yet.
Okay, well, we are going to have to move on. Stephen, if you're out there in the ether and can hear me, I'll just let you know, I'm sorry if it doesn't work out for you to provide testimony. You can also submit a letter just via our web form, and all five commissioners plus the general manager and any other senior staff who might need to read that will get a copy of it, will read it, and will be certain to respond. So again, I'm sorry if you're not able to make the call this evening, but whatever comments and feedback you have, we'll certainly take it to heart. All right, we will move on then with our next agenda item, and hold on just a moment here and move windows around on my computer. All right, next up is our consent calendar. So we have two consent calendars. The consent calendar A is comprised of the minutes, a couple of contracts, and an intergovernmental agreement. Do I have a motion to approve? Sorry, I'm moving the windows around here. Sorry about that. I can see John's hand, I can't see others. John, I believe you're making a motion to approve?
Yes.
So if somebody else did, then I apologize. I'm moving a bunch of stuff around on a small window, on a small screen here. Sonia, did you make a second?
Sonia, second.
Okay, thank you very much. Any discussion before we vote? All right, well, all those in favor of consent calendar I, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 We are definitely getting better at that, folks. All right, looks like that passes unanimously. All right, now we have consent calendar B, several contracts, an intergovernmental agreement, and two resolutions. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to pull one.
Thank you. Sonia, which ones would you like to pull?
I'd like to pull the intergovernmental agreement, number nine, please.
All right, we're going to pull number nine. Does anybody want to pull any other items? John Brown?
Number eight.
Funny, that's the one I was going to pull. All right, any other ones? All right, well, for the balance then of the consent calendar, I will just list off what I believe that comprises, so we're all on the same page. That would be items five, six, seven, 10, 11, and 12. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Sonia. All those in favor of consent calendar B, less items eight and nine, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
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 All right, well, now we will, suddenly realizing, and maybe didn't take that quite in the order that it needed to be, but nonetheless, we did what we did. Why don't we pull item number eight? John Brown, go ahead.
Thank you, and I'm sorry I didn't submit a question earlier, but I just thought of this. And if we're going to spend $2.6 million additional for meter installation, is there provision that this money is, just so I can understand, it's spent locally on local contractors and things such as that, and we're not bringing in people from the outside? Because I would certainly like to spend as much money with local help as we can, as long as it's qualified.
So Commissioner Brown, this is Rod. Really, this is not additional money. We would have to pay for the installation, whether we did it or the contractors are doing it. But I'll have to get back to you on, I believe they've, I'll check and see, I don't, I'll check and see where the resources are coming from. I'll get back to the board.
Thank you. It's just that, you know, I just have a real strong propensity to buy local and to hire local, all else considered equal, as long as we can get the best bang for the buck, because there are a lot of people that are financially challenged right now and a significant amount of money, and hopefully we could help this to, you know, help our communities. So thank you.
Yep. It's not in their favor to bring somebody from New York, for instance, though. Local people, it's cheaper, so.
Thank you.
I see Frank and Sarah both ready to go. Frank, you can decide who goes first.
Oh, well, I was just going to chime in. This is, this is a relatively unique application, and so I don't know that there would be local contractors that would be available for that. There might be Northwest contractors or someone on the West Coast. I'm sure Rod's correct, they aren't going to be flying people across the country, but meter installations are fairly unique compared to a number of the other things that we procure. Sarah, did you want to add to that?
Yes, so they will be bringing in experts to be able to provide training and management of the program, but they will be hiring local technicians to do the work, the majority of the work.
That's very comforting, though. At least we're going to keep some of the money here. Thank you.
I had a question as well. I saw that there were some questions over the weekend about this from Commissioner Schlossberg. If there were responses, you know, and that's, again, don't blame anybody for this, it's just a compressed schedule this week. I haven't had a chance to read them yet, but there was a request, you know, to just get a little bit more clear about what our long-term implementation plan is regarding smart meters. I just want to, one, find out, Mindy, did you get your questions answered regarding, in that, well, did you get your questions answered on that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I have a question. So, you know, this is, you know, another $3 million, close to, that we're adding on to the total budget, and I haven't seen any updated explanation about the business case, you know, and how is that, you know, to the extent to which we expect that to pay off through labor savings or other kinds of savings that might arise from this project? So my question is, do we need to, are we in a rush to sign this contract this month? Or could we delay the signing of it, not vote for it right now, and get a little bit more information about our, about the business case now that we're spending an additional $3 million to implement?
Well, of course, you can always delay signing, right? And the risk, I guess, is relatively small, but the, once you sign this, there's a two-month ramp-up window to, for the contractor to start. So the business case is, you know, if you look at the labor and install costs, it's slightly more expensive to have the contractor, but EWEB simply isn't staffed to get this done in the time that we need to, or that we've actually talked to the community and to the board about, which is roughly the end of next year, Q2, Q1 of 2022. So the faster we get these installed, the better the business case looks in the long run, because the information is used for all kinds of things, but power resourcing and those kind of things in the long-term contracting with our Bonneville contract that's coming up. So the sooner we get data in, the more successful, and the bigger the return on investment is going to be from a dollar standpoint. So just to be clear, too, this is, this is on the electric meters. We're still continuing on the same five-year path with the water meters.
But it is an overall increase of $3 million.
No, it'll net out to be a small increase. So one of the things I will say is that we should have some of the final cost data. We're still working on that. I was just talking to Samirat this morning or yesterday or sometime this week about that, that by probably the end of this year, we'll have and present in the Q1 report some pretty solid updated financials.
Dick, go ahead.
Well, I don't necessarily endorse the notion that we'd hold off on this. I think we're committed to the project at this point, but I do agree that it's been quite a while since we've gotten an updated view of where we're at with things and kind of how this is aligning with our sense of timing on other strategic objectives that would rely on this technology. So I would certainly endorse as soon as possible, obviously not at this penultimate meeting, but certainly maybe when the new board is installed to do a refresher on the road that we've traveled to this point. I also would question whether or not this is, in fact, an increase or not, because while it is a trade-out largely for internal labor, we're not going to lay those people off, they're going to go and do something else. So we're going to have an external expenditure, I would think, that, you know, would be in the amount that we're discussing here, which would be not in addition to the project budget, but would have some encumbrance on the budget overall. But that notwithstanding, I've been trusting staff to move the project forward and, you know, I too am curious as to how things are aligning relative to our sense of strategic leverage and payback on the investment, because some of the things that we were anticipating doing with this system in terms of demand management and other things are still kind of a long way off in terms of both payoff and traction. So I share some of the concerns that have been expressed here and the need for an update, and nonetheless, would be willing to vote in support of moving forward with the staff request.
So thanks, Dick. I think, just one quick comment on this, that the staff we had intended to do the installs are still working and doing installs. And so over the next year and a half, they'll be phased into the meter shop, the electric meter shop three-phase program. So we're, it's all kind of flowing with the plan.
Go ahead, Frank.
Yeah, President Mattel, commissioners, I would, there's no issue at all if we want to take a look at this strategically and where it fits. I think that's, that's an appropriate step to take as far as just a review of the strategy as well. The timing is starting to become critical for the organization, and that's part of the reason that we looked at accelerating the installation of the electric side. We originally had targeted the end of 2021. Through this contracting effort, we can, we can get that done in early 2022. When you start to then look at being able to introduce new products, time of use, demand side management, the kinds of products that will allow us to develop flexibility in the consumption side, those will then have to be launched now and probably early to mid-2023 based on some, not just meters, but some other upgrades. Then you start to look at how that weighs into the upcoming negotiations with the Bonneville contract and other contracts on the resource side, really being hot and heavy by no later than 2025. We're starting to push up against the strategic window. That's why we really think it's important to get the meter piece of this done by early 2022. As far as overall return on investment impact, if you look at the original contract being five years ago, and at $20 million, that's the census piece, and you just escalate that based on a 2.3% cost of inflation, that's over $2.5 million. So the impact on the return on investment, even though $2.5, even if the full $2.5 million was incremental, and it's not, it's just a replacement of opportunity cost, the impact on the overall ROI on a $35 million program is, is less and less significant. And so I think we should review it. We should review it as part of our strategic review when we go through the goals and things for next year, but the timing is starting to become more and more critical on the electric side because of getting demand response in some of these new side because of getting demand response and some of these new products in play by 2023.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Sonya.
I was just going to move to approve.
All right. John, you have a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor of approving contract in item number eight, please raise your hand, signify by saying aye.
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 Looks like that passes unanimously. So now we'll bring up item number nine, that's the IGA with the city for collection of stormwater and sewer fees. Sonya, go ahead.
Hi, thanks, Steve. So I wanted to ask a couple of questions about the, about how the rate is determined, and when we have the center governmental agreement, what, what encumbrances there are in that essentially? If we, if we're, if we have a rate of $1.62, and there's other things that come up, I mean, right now, we have, we contract with another group to actually perform that billing, is my understanding. If they raise their rates, are we able to pass that back on or revisit that with the city? Because it has this CPI adjustment in it. So somebody can kind of speak to the, the dynamics of that and how it works. I'd like to hear a little bit more.
So I'll start off. Commissioner Carlson, there's, there's a couple of things in this contract that we put in there specifically because we know there's a few things that are changing. Part of this is the escalation from CPI, which, which is covered. We actually think our processing cost is going to go down based on our CEI and our billing projects that, that we're working on now. We put a mid-period renegotiation or our kind of a midterm adjustment at about two and a half years out, specifically to address any potential changes that may come about through technology. So we think we've covered natural inflationary escalation, but I think it's, it's a great question. We have put a midterm adjustment period in there that we can, we can renegotiate the price if we need to. I don't know if someone else, or Sarah, or Julie, or Deborah, or somebody else wanted to correct all the things I just said, that would, that would be great.
This is Julie, and I think, I'm trying to get my, my video camera to come on. There we go. No, I think everything you said is correct, and the way we calculated is based on actual costs. So we looked at, you know, share of customer service, meter reading, the vendors that we do use for billing. And we did calculate in the new vendors that we're using as part of the CEI project, so that's already been calculated in. And then we did put in that midpoint checkpoint, and that's what we're anticipating is that our costs would go down.
Great. Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
I have a couple of follow-up questions, Julie or Frank. So I believe in my understanding of, when I read through it, is that the new agreement would allow some piece of the low-income funds that we disperse to be counted towards stormwater fees that the, that the, that the city would want to collect. So if somebody, somebody was in arrears relative to the city, that some of those funds that, that we disperse could be made available to cover those fees. Is that true?
Right. So part of the calculation and the cost is the city's participation in the ECC program. So when we, when we award somebody ECC, it goes to their entire bill. So it would cover the stormwater, wastewater part of their bill. So the city does participate in that. Part of what we're going to collect from them goes toward ECC. And Mindy, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong on that one. That's my understanding.
Well, before she does, the, so is that, that is our current arrangement, and we're planning to just continue it, or that is a new provision in the contract?
No, my understanding is that's what we currently do. We did go back in and in our, in our billing, in our cost methodology, we just went in and double-checked to make sure that they were contributing an appropriate amount, based on then what we were distributing back out that was spread across all of the charges on the bill.
In other words, Julie, the city is paying for their portion of ECC funding, I guess, to get to Steve's point. We're, we're not applying things to them, but paying for it through ECC. The city is paying their portion of whatever is attributed to, to stormwater and wastewater.
Okay, that is, that is my question. So li-heap money that we have that is made available, and any other form of funding that we have available to EWEB to support our low-income customers, especially when they're burdened in the winter months by our heating bills, not, no piece of that is somehow being carved off to help pay for their stormwater and sewer funds?
So, so just to be clear, President Mattel, li-heap is very specific to the electrical side. It doesn't apply to water either. So li-heap funding is, is a very allocated funding just for electric and water, or just electric. The only thing we're talking about is an ECC funding, of which the city would pay their fair share of. That is what can go towards stormwater and wastewater. All the other funding is, can be very specific, and we have to handle that specifically and separately.
All right. Well, thank you for that. I have one other question. The, and that, that answers exactly the concern that I had, but it sounds like you all accommodated that ahead of time. So thank you for that. The other question is, how have we, you know, priced in the, I don't know what you call it, but the burden of being the collector for an unpopular, you know, fee, right? So the city, when, when and if they decide they need to raise that fee, it appears as if, to most people, because they just, you know, don't have the time to really think through all of these things, it appears that their EWEB bill went up. And this is something of a, you know, of a bitter point for us at times. Have we priced that in to this contract?
We have not priced in, you know, emotional damages to, to our, to our staff and, and board for that. So, you know, answering that directly, we, we, we take that burden, the emotional burden on for that.
And why would, why should we? Why wouldn't we tell them, I don't think, yeah, don't do it themselves?
Well, part of it is that we are mandated to do this. We are mandated to do it at actual cost. And I'm not sure how we would justify the actual emotional cost of, of doing that. But we are mandated by city charter to do this and, and do it at cost.
Well, that answers that question. Dick, you still want to follow up?
Yes. I almost hate to raise this, but I will ask, are there any provision, I didn't have a chance to look at the details. Are there any provisions in this agreement that would allow for other city billings to appear on our bill? And has there been any recent, I know the city in the past has entertained various things, revenue-enhancing things that they've contemplated that they posit might appear on the EWEB bill. Has that come up recently? I know it's always been a concern to the board, and I haven't heard anything lately that that's been the case, but have you heard anything lately regarding the city's interests?
Yeah, Commissioner Helgeson, they occasionally ask for some method of, of other collections. You're right. We have historically said no. We, we continue to say no. I think the last opportunity, there was something that I reviewed with the board, and the board again said no. The, the city charter is very specific in that it says, I believe it refers, refers to it as liquid wastes, which, you know, so it's very specific in what we're obligated to do. And anything beyond that, throughout the history of EWEB, we've said no. And maybe that's because of the emotional toll that.
I knew that was coming back.
President Mattel talked about, but there hasn't been any request in the past year. I'll just say it that way. The last request was about a year and a half ago.
Thank you.
Sorry, Julie, go ahead, in case you want to respond directly to what Dick said, then we'll pick up someone's question.
Yep. I was just going to say that with our new bill that we're going to be seeing next year, it is being redesigned in a way that does make it much more clear what is EWEB charge and what is the city charge. And that, part of the cost of that bill redesign is being passed along to the city. So it's a little bit of good news in there.
Appreciate that. Julie, go ahead, Sonya.
Thank you. I appreciate you letting me have another question while my foster kitty was in here distracting me earlier. So I was curious about the mailing charge. Do we pay for the, we pay for the mailing charge, correct? And that's a part of that, that cost that we pass on? Is that a part of that calculation?
Yes, postage is calculated. So we look at all bills that are generated, how many of them are e-bills delivered, how many of them get mailed, and that, that portion is spread across, and the city is paying for their portion of that.
Okay. The only reason I bring it up is that in light of recent challenges with our postal system, if we were to have another upheaval and some distress there, it, it might mean that that rate might need to be adjusted sooner rather than later if, for some reason, those rates change drastically to deal with the current situation. So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I'm assuming we have some wiggle room there to handle that kind of variance, but just wanted to raise the issue. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions about item, item number nine?
Move to approve.
And I think that was John Brown offering a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay. It looks like that one also passes unanimously. Our normal next item of business, we'd be moving to general business items, but I just got a text from Anca Board Secretary. So one of the folks who was trying to get on and speak earlier during public testimony, Stephen Anderson, has finally managed to come through on the line. Normally, we would, you know, ask him to give testimony at a subsequent meeting, but given the difficulties of technology, I think we can make an exception and hear his testimony. So Stephen Anderson, if you are there, please unmute your phone and, and put three minutes on the clock, please.
Hi, President Mattel. I, Mr. Anderson did disconnect the call, but I just spoke with him on his cell phone and asked him to call in again right now. So I'm hoping he'll join us any second.
Okay. We'll hold on for a moment or two and keep our fingers crossed on his behalf.
Thank you.
This is the time when we need the kitten.
Yeah. Foster kitty, eh?
Yeah, she's very sweet. And it's feeding time. So I'm in here, and I'm usually the one that feeds them. So they open the door, they just open the door to come in and get something. And of course, the cats, we call them cat sharks, because they just circle around me until I feed them.
Well, that sound, I think, means somebody's just joined on the call. Hopefully it's Stephen Anderson.
It is. Yes, it is.
All right, Mr. Anderson, I apologize on behalf of EWEB for the technical difficulties that you had, but it's, but you're here now, and we're happy to have your testimony. Why don't you go ahead?
Well, thank you. Yes. I'm at a disadvantage. My URL link did not work. I think it was for a different month, but this is the age of COVID, so we have to learn to roll with these things. But I want to thank you for the opportunity and the board for allowing me to, to testify. And I also want to really thank Laura and Dick Helgeson for walking the woods with us the other day. That was very, very useful, and I think they have a better idea why we are concerned. And my main concern is I think the board should be involved in this project. This is a legacy project. We can't, I don't think we should get wrong. And it involves so much wildlife habitat. And there's been nothing shown to me, and I've been a timber follower, I've been in construction, I don't see a real impediment changing, reversing the tank order, which will do the following. It will impact much less habitat for however many years until we need tank two. And I realize it's down the road, five or seven or however many years. But in the interim, we keep some old-growth trees that are older than Eugene, that are major habitat. I mean, I can rattle off for you right now, I'm very involved in the birding community, I can rattle off 40 birds that we have here all the time, many of them nesting, including a couple of years we've had piliated woodpeckers nest. So this is no small thing. And those trees are no small thing. And we've had, we've heard words like oak savanna, and understand that we want to preserve the extreme west end of the meadow and the oaks there, the big oaks, and I totally understand. But also, oak savanna includes old-growth fir, and we've got some trees up here that are 40 inches through. I mean, they're monsters. They've been here since before Eugene, and they're called wolf trees, and they're part of the oak savanna. And they're called that because they have limbs from the bottom all the way to the top until they get to a certain size, and then the limbs start to fall off. But you can see it, you can come up and see it yourself. So it takes an engineering reset, I understand that, but they do that all the time. And I see a couple of things that are really bothersome. On the website, for example, it shows an open meadow, and, and then below it, an idea of where the tanks will be. Well, neither of the tanks are going to be in the open meadow. Tank number two, which we would prefer to be tank number one, will be about 30 feet into the meadow, won't impact the meadow at all. So if we change that sequence, we get that first tank in the saddle exactly where it belongs. And 10 years down the road, you will already have all the infrastructure and to hook tank number two up, and we understand we're going to lose our old growth. But the longer we keep it there, the better. And one of the other problems is, as soon as all those big trees are gone, it's going to, it's going to bring winds across the ridge that are presently not hitting us. And there is an awful lot of woods to the east, and all of us are going to be impacted, all of us neighbors, by just that.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up. You're, you're significantly over your three minutes. I want to appreciate what you have to say, but also ask you to respect our time as well.
You bet. All right. All I want to say is, please consider this. I think the board needs to be involved, and I don't think you've been shown everything that's happening. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you. Now, before we open it up for commissioners to respond if they so choose, Anne, could I just ask you to work with the minutes takers to make sure that even though this came in after public testimony was opened and closed, that it be included in our minutes next month in the public testimony section of those minutes?
Absolutely.
Right.
All right. Well, thank you. Stephen, before I open it up to commissioners to respond, I just want to know whether you were able to hear commissioner responses to some of the other folks who testified on this subject earlier, so that the folks know whether, you know, not to repeat themselves if you've already had a chance to hear board members say.
I did not. I was, I was given the wrong URL and was never able to hear any of the meetings.
All right. Well, fair enough. Well, we'll open up to commissioner, we'll open up to some commissioner feedback. I'm going to ask Dick Helgeson to go first.
Well, Steve, I'm glad you finally made it on. I'm sorry about the difficulties you encountered. I'm not going to repeat what I said earlier, but we hear the concerns that you've expressed. I, I know that Laura and I appreciated the opportunity that we had over the weekend to meet with you, and I'm looking forward to hearing from staff as their work progresses with respect to the matters that you've raised. So thanks again for your testimony and the time that you took to meet with us over the weekend, and it's helpful.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Anderson, I just wanted to remind you that sometime tomorrow, the entire recording of this meeting would be available on our website. So you, I encourage you to listen to what Senator Bishop and James Porter had to say in terms of testimony. I know that your neighbors and several commissioners responded in depth. So as not to repeat that, please take a listen to that. Do want to open it up to any other commissioner responses that may be out there. All right. Well, I will just say that, you know, again, thank you for the, for the testimony, and I, I certainly. And I certainly, you know, could put myself in your position and be sympathetic. And at the same time, there is this, you know, important city need. My understanding of the sequencing, by the way, is there's a handful of things in play there. But that staff has determined that by that the meadow is very useful in terms of helping to stage for what we are calling Tank One. And if they were to resequence, they would actually end up by being likely more trees cut down in order to make room for for construction vehicles and temporary roadways and that kind of thing. So I understand that that's at least part of the concern. But I guess we'll have to end there. Thank you again for your testimony. And I hope you'll continue to work with staff and pay attention to the information that they put out as the reports become due. All right. Well, we will move on to our general business items. I see Deborah Hart is in the hot seat, as they as we like to say. All right. Next up is the 2021 Proposed Budgets and Prices. We have Deborah and Frank. And if you'd put 15 minutes on the clock, please, Ann.
Thank you, President Maital. Good evening, Commissioners. And we are here again to talk about budgets and price proposals. I know this did make up a big chunk of that 286-page board packet. And I just want to thank you all. With me is Adam Ru. He's the Fiscal Services Supervisor. And then so Alicia Voorhees and Ben Satshdeva, our Senior Financial Analyst, are available to answer questions. Next slide, please. So this evening, we are reviewing the proposed budgets and price proposals for both the water and the electric utilities. We do have a short presentation to go over, after which we'll be holding a public hearing and then return to the board for direction. And with that, I'm going to pass it off to Adam.
Great. Thanks, Deborah. So this is the pie chart we showed last month with the kind of high-level overview of the budget. There haven't been any changes since we presented this last month to the budget. But we did provide the more detailed budget document as promised. So we'll be happy to go through the questions related to either of those documents at the end. Just for a side note, the 2021 budget is relatively consistent with 2021, 2020 overall. There is a little bit of an increase in capital for both water and electric utility and the electric O and M decreased largely due to lower purchase power costs. So that will go to the price proposal of review. And so this slide has quite a few. There are quite a few items to discuss. So we'll just kind of walk them through each one individually. The overall, we had no change in prices. This is the fifth year in a row for the electric utility. Six of the last seven years with no overall price change, as well as the fourth consecutive year for the water utility. For the we prepared the cost of service report and the classes were generally within 5%. There was a couple that were outside of that in the five-point-something range. We didn't recommend adjusting those as those were purely a result of the lower sales forecast that we projected for 2021. So taking that out of play, they would have been within the 5%. So we're not recommending any cost of service adjustment at this time. The next item was there's a several annual market-based adjustments that we bring every year. We put these all under the same proposal. The first one is the customer generation rate, which typically applies to rooftop solar, but it's not technology-specific. We base it on wholesale markets for power and for REX. And we pass that through to customers that have those generating resources. Relative to 2020, there was a higher market price. So the price of this is roughly 3.6 cents per kilowatt hour. And it was a bit under 3 cents last year. The next, yeah, the next item is the Business Growth and Retention Rate or Credit. That's the rate that was developed several years ago in recognition that we had surplus power. It provides and selling that power is beneficial to all customers since the retail rate is higher than the wholesale rate. So it's developed based on the splitting the difference between retail and wholesale for those customers for a short period of time. As mentioned earlier, the wholesale prices are higher. So this credit was reduced a bit relative to last year. The next one is the Last Market-Based Price. It's the Partial Requirements. Similar to the Customer Generation Rate, it's for customers with generation. But these are general it's geared towards larger generators that typically have dispatchable generation. So there's a time of use component to that one. We currently have no customers on this rate, but we do have a couple of customers with generators that could be applicable if they weren't served under retail contracts. We like to update this every year so they can see what the current pricing would be if they weren't served under contract. In addition to the annual update to the customer generation rates, we're also proposing to split out the REX from the power. We had a customer that wants to retain their REX. And since we don't need those for compliance, we're proposing to have an energy-only value so they can maintain their REX and just saves us the administrative burden of acquiring them and selling them into the market. The next item is really led by our customer Customer Service Group and Customer Experience Program as they adjust their bill presentment. They've been they've asked if we would be able to reduce the rounding from five to four decimal points to ease that communication on the rates. And finance, we did an assessment of the financial impact and felt to be and found it to be relatively minor. Some of the rounding was up and some was down. And so it ended up being in the tens of $1,000 relative to that $300 million budget. We also reviewed what our comparators used where we typically show that bill comparison. There were a couple that used six decimal points in their in their rates. There were also several that had the five where we are currently. But the majority of them had four decimal points or two decimal points out of our comparators. So they're kind of have range, but the trend among our comparators at least seems to be lower numbers. Also, we've historically had a Bonneville pass-through of our reactive power charge. Bonneville has since eliminated that charge as a line item on their bill and recovers those costs in their general rates. So we're proposing to do a similar elimination of the reactive power charge and making up the revenue difference in the base rates. And the next item is based on some earlier board discussions. We're proposing adding a new customer class for the McKenzie Valley Service, part of our service territory. This is to align kind of with what we've been doing for the water utility with intent in the within the city and outside of city rates, as well as the elevation charges to segment those customers to target products and services and programs, as well as potentially pricing differential between those different customer segments. Street lighting is an item that when the city engaged in its LED retrofitting, we weren't sure which technology they'd choose. So we developed a rate that had very specific range of wattages. So we had a 0 to 10, 10 to 20, 20 to 30, 30 to 40. Since then, they've really centered on specific bulb types. So we just eliminate we're just proposing to eliminate to clean up the procedures some of the classes that don't have any bulbs in them. For our contract customers that we prepare our cost of service every year and typically pass through per those contracts, rate adjustments for the electric contract customers, they just point directly to the cost of service. And those don't require board action. But the water district contracts state that we'll prepare the cost of service to annually for their rates and the board will approve those. So those do require board action to make those adjustments. And then finally, we included in the background a proposal for a three-year cycle of preparing the cost of service. We've noticed in the last few years, there hasn't been a dramatic shift among the classes, but felt it might be prudent to get on a schedule where we're making those changes every so every few years, as well as if there is an adjustment that's required, having a multi-year cycle might facilitate transitioning and employing the principle of gradualism to phase those in. Also, since many of the strategic plan initiatives are multi-year, it seemed like a potential opportunity to align strategic initiatives with pricing changes. And so we there's a lot of items on that list. We'll pull up a list at the very end of the presentation during the discussion section so you can reference those. But slide, this slide is one that we bring related to where we stand compared to our other comparators. Obviously, we haven't changed. We're not proposing to change our rate. So there's just the one bar where we currently are and where we're proposed to be. We haven't moved position since you've seen this the last time that some of the other utilities have had adjustments. We're in the sixth lowest among the comparators, which is based on being the second lowest for water and the eighth lowest for the electric utility for a single typical, single-family residence. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Deborah.
Thank you, Adam. So this evening, management is recommending that the board direct staff to prepare budgets and price proposals as presented in the board materials. And if we could go to the next slide. You can see here, we're now in the final steps of a process that began in June and includes capital planning, long-term financial plan updates, as well as our organizational budgets. Based on feedback this evening, staff will be returning with budgets and price proposals at the December week meeting. And then after the final public hearing, we'll be requesting approval. With that, I'd like to open it up to questions. There were several different pricing updates. And if it would be helpful, we can put a list of those up for which we're requesting feedback after the conclusion of public testimony.
All right. Well, thank you, Deborah. Ann, would you let me know whether there's anybody in line interested to give public testimony? I won't open up a queue unless there is somebody there interested in speaking.
No, President Maital. No one signed up to give testimony during the hearing.
All right. Well, in that case, I don't see any reason to to address item number nine, excuse me, to address item. Boy, where were we here? Sir, item, sorry, item number eight, Public Hearing. We'll just move right into item number nine, and that's really direction from the board. So Ann, if you put 15 minutes back on the clock, I will open up a queue for.
President Maital. Could I just say one thing? I believe that by statute, you need to open and close public testimony for this particular item.
Okay. Fair enough. I will go ahead and open up a queue for public testimony on the 2021 Proposed Budget. And once again, would you let me know if there's anybody interested in speaking?
No, President Maital. No one signed up.
All right. Well, in that case, I will close that public testimony.
Thank you, President.
Does that satisfy whatever statutory needs?
Yeah, it makes me feel better. Thank you.
All right. Well, I wouldn't want you to suffer any emotional burden unduly here. All right. Well, we will move right into item number nine, and that's Direction from the Board. There's 15 minutes. Ann, if you wouldn't mind putting on the clock and I'll open up a queue. Hold on just a moment here. Let me get your faces all there in front of me. If anybody'd like to speak, Sonya, why don't you go ahead? And then we'll follow that with Dick.
Okay. Thank you. First off, I appreciated the questions being answered proposed over the weekend. So thank you so much on those. That really helps. I didn't have any follow-up questions to those. But after the presentation, I had a couple. The multi, I'm really intrigued by this multi-year rating rate proposal. And I'm curious, would that mean that as a board, we would vote for a plan for three years? Can we do that? And it seems like there might be some inner from from different boards. I mean, we have two members of the board that are leaving. And can we vote in rate increases that would come in 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 later years with a different board? That's one thought I had. And then two, what would that mean? Would that mean for this year that we would be actually looking at? If that is the case, would we be looking at voting on something potentially, you know, three years out? Can you just elaborate a little bit more on that concept?
Sure. Adam, I would I would go ahead. So first of all, Sonya, the there is an annual requirement that the board approve budgets and prices on an annual basis. So you you we would not be asking the board to make commitments for future boards. What the this really is specific to developing an in-depth cost of service analysis that would provide the board and staff with a direction over the next several years so that if it looks like there's something that is three years out, the board could take action in the present year in a form of gradualism. So if the cost of service analysis showed an adjustment, you know, a major shift needed to take place three years from now, it is possible that the first two steps could be taken with that in mind. And so this is kind of a way of and then in the in the interim times, you do cost of service assessments, but you don't go through the the full exercise and burden and cost and effort to do a full cost of service analysis other than the the three years, unless there's some economic justification to do that. Did I explain that right, Deborah?
Yes, you did. Thank you. And yes, you were correct that each year, any year in which there was a rate action, the board would take action in that year to approve.
Great. Thank you. That, yeah, that's that's what I thought was happening, but I just wanted to clarify on that one. Other than that, I I mean, I'm astounded that for a six out of seven years, been able to hold rates down again. And, you know, I think we've done all the right things. I appreciate all of your hard work to make sure that we're there. Always have to balance that with making sure that we are doing the right kinds of investment that we need to do and we're not kicking the can down the road. I think we always have to be cognizant of that. But I don't think we're doing that. I mean, I do believe that we're making the right investments that we need to. And, you know, and I recognize that that's also challenging at that this time. You know, we're looking at places where we're underspending in part because we just because of COVID and other, you know, situational factors we're dealing with. You know, we're having to move projects out. So I appreciate all of that and I appreciate the hard work that went into making this budget. I know that those 286 pages don't pop out of thin air. I mean, that's a lot of work to to put that all together. And we have we go through reading it, but you all have to go through writing it. So thank you for that work. That's what I have.
Commissioner Helgason, I think you're next, and then John Brown.
Okay. Well, I too appreciate all of staff's good work on yet another seemingly successful, but yet to conclude budget season. I took the the three-year kind of review cycle to be sort of like the way we approved the first year of the capital plan. But we project out and we plan for the trajectory and kind of that feeds into our financial planning and modeling. And this would be a similar way that we'd be managing our rate trajectory as we begin to see that we're going to move into a timeframe when rate increases are needed. So that's kind of the way I took that. I will resist the temptation to comment on the McKenzie Customer Class. I think I've done that already in sufficient form. But I have a sort of a detailed question that I will apologize in advance to my colleagues for. And that has to do with the elimination of the reactive power charge. Maybe this is a question for Adam. So believe it or not, I used to be one of the people that got to answer to our customers when they had power factor adjustments on their bills. At that time, we were measuring VARs and converting that to a percentage power factor adjustment and essentially penalizing people or charging them for the addition. adjustment, and essentially penalizing people or charging them for the additional costs that we incurred, not just with Bonneville, but in transformation capacity and other things in our system that, like capacitance, that we used and invested in in order to offset lower power factors. So there was an element of that that related to the Bonneville bills and the way they charged us, but there was also a consideration of the additional cost that, particularly in circumstances where people had very low power factors, were essentially being borne by the system and otherwise by our other customers who had good power factors. So without going into a discussion of real and apparent power and foam on the beer and all of that, can you explain to me why it's equitable for us to eliminate this when some of our customers will still have low power factors, and I'm assuming that we will continue to incur some costs in our own system in order to serve that?
Well, that was kind of one of the internal steps in the process, was reaching out to kind of the distribution engineering and trying to see to what extent they are planning or making incremental investments based on power factor. And just the order of magnitude felt relatively minor compared to the administrative impact. And when we kind of reviewed the customers that are currently seeing a reactive power charge, being on their bills and kind of which, if it was justified to have those, if those customers had any ability to control their reactive power for, you know, if it's, you know, like a large department store or something that might have their, be currently seeing a reactive power charge, that it's something that isn't really generating motors. And so it felt like the majority of the customers that had the charge probably didn't have a lot operationally they could do to impact that line item on their bill, and there was relatively little amount of different investment decisions we might be making based on that. And so it felt kind of prudent to follow suit with Bonneville and eliminate it, just because it ended up being such a small relative proportion of the bill and something that maybe either side of the customers or us wasn't really planning or making any investment decisions around. So I think in this truest sense of perfect rates, I mean, there's probably a lot of detail that we would want to, you know, that it could be, I think there's a reasonable justification for it, but I think it's just the trade-off between doing it right and keeping it maintained. It might have been a little rambling, because I see Frank raising his hand.
So I'm comfortable with that response, and I thank you for it. I assume that we're doing something that's similar in trend to what other utilities are doing there. And I appreciate that maybe at this point, it's kind of a de minimis issue. I guess the only other thing I'd want to know is, you know, sometimes that can have implications for the system that are important beyond just what the investments are that we're making in terms of transformer loading and that kind of stuff. So are we still going to measure it and pay attention to it, and if there's a problem somewhere, be able to flag that and follow up with customers, or is it going to be completely off the radar screen?
No, I think that that would still be information that would be collected and presumably reviewed, because I think all the customers under those accounts would be kind of in the key account, or customers would be monitored and have relationships with customer service groups. I think that that kind of...
Okay. Thank you, Adam. I'm sure I'm out of time.
Frank, you're muted, Frank, or at least it seems that way.
Thanks, President Maital. I was just going to add that it is pretty immaterial at the moment. To answer your question, Commissioner Helgeson, right, we will continue to measure this. There is not a capacity issue on the system based on low power factor at the moment or a significant financial impact. So it's, we'll continue to do the things I think you're probably used to, but it's a fairly minimal impact at the moment.
Just want to comment that that makes me feel a little sheepish, inasmuch as I'm not an engineer, and I always struggle to explain this to customers, so maybe that's the good thing here. But it makes me feel a little sheepish that maybe I was just kind of inventing all of that back then. So it sounds like, it feels like I owe somebody an apology. But thank you.
Commissioner Schlossberg, go ahead.
I think maybe Commissioner Brown was in queue in front of me.
Thanks for that. So you're right. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mindy. I want to commend staff and everybody else for doing, again, a great job of presenting this. I'm totally in line with what you're proposing. I do have a more of a global question about watershed restoration, and it's my understanding, Frank, that we cannot do that through rates, that it has to be kind of a surcharge or something else, because I highly suspect we're going to need more money in the long run to help preserve our watershed. And is that going to be something that we're going to do in this three-year projection? I mean, how are we going to deal with the economic reality of what it's going to take to preserve the integrity of Mackenzie?
So, it's a great question, Commissioner Brown. Our plan is that there is a difference between watershed restoration and watershed preservation, which is typically what we've done. In the first quarter of next year, as in response to the board's comments last month, which was for staff to develop a more detailed plan as to what restoration priorities are and what those are going to cost, in the first quarter next year, we'll bring a watershed restoration plan back to the board, and it will include the proposed impacts on the budget for 2021 and also a projection for future years, 2022 through probably 2024 or 2025 at least. The funding mechanisms for that, we could do in rates. The challenge with the restoration piece is if we truly view restoration as a discrete period of time, where there's a beginning and an end, it is very difficult to do that in rates when you go to back off the rate when you're done with that in five years. It's easier to do that as some kind of a watershed restoration, charge or fund or surcharge, whatever you would call it, that could be backed off later, once you're through the restoration process. So from a budgetary standpoint, we'll bring something back to the board in early 2021 with what the plan and the funding requirements are, and then we'll present as well how we would actually implement those funding requirements. But it would likely be some kind of a fund or a surcharge associated with the restoration piece, not the ongoing watershed protection piece. Does that help?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure that because of the timing and the necessity of a quick response, that we don't face this without dealing with economic requirements to address it. So I just want to make sure we're covering that, because we're covering the future with no rate increases, and I'm sure the budget can't absorb what it's going to cost.
Right. We think that if the board want, if we go to the, if we come back to the board, not if, when we come back to the board next year with increased watershed restoration needs and funding, we will need to back that up with, this is what it looks like, this is what you're getting for that investment. And so that'll be probably in February of 2021 that we'll bring the plan and the funding request back to the board.
All right, Mindy, go ahead.
So my question is about the Mackenzie Valley customer class, and I'm just curious why, what would happen if we didn't do it this year? I know I've asked questions about this before, but just that we haven't had a chance to have our Upriver meeting, there's something about it that just doesn't feel right to me. And so I know that we're not planning on raising rates or changing their rates this year, but in the future, we could conceivably, and it just feels like they're not getting adequate kind of explanation or outreach. So why now and why not wait a year for that?
To answer your question, there is not a lot of impact to waiting. On the other hand, we've been talking about this for over 18 months, and so, including some discussion at previous Upriver meetings, there is no financial impact to the Upriver customers. We wouldn't feel comfortable doing that without more outreach, but this creates a class that we can start measuring, that we can start looking at for programs a lot, and is significant enough, and we felt like that it was appropriate to do it. If the board said, no, we don't want that, then we don't do it. There's no budgetary impact to it, given that it's initially aligned with the urban rates. So if the board isn't comfortable as a board, then that's fine. We feel it's appropriate to move that direction. We're doing it in a very slow way, you know, sort of painfully slow in some ways for someone who's impatient like myself, but we understand the outreach piece of it. So if the board said, no, there's no financial, there's no material impact from a financial perspective in the near term.
Yes, I would just add then, I would support waiting a year on that, but I don't know if my fellow commissioners feel the same way or not.
I'll just jump in real quick before we take a round two. Sonya, we'll start with you in round two if we need to. So just to, you know, answer Mindy's question, for me, it's sort of, at this point, it's sort of a housekeeping item, and, you know, I'd rather just sort of finish up those housekeeping details when our attention is still sort of clearly on the issue, and we haven't sort of forgotten why we initiated that process in the first place. So that's me, while the commissioners may think differently about it. I just wanted to also appreciate the separation of the restoration, you know, projects and costs. I just think that's a much more sort of clear and transparent way to go about things, and I won't be here in any case when those issues come back in front of the board in February, but I really applaud you, Frank, and staff for setting it up that way, so that it's very clear for commissioners, but also for our customer base as to what it costs, what we're doing, and what we'll likely get in response. And then I also wanted to just say very quickly that, Deborah, I think this is true, right? Is this the first time you've been responsible for the budget soup to nuts?
As CFO, yes.
Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. We'll take round two. Sonya, go ahead.
I was curious on Commissioner Schlossberg's point about the Upriver rate. If you, if we set up this extra, this other rate structure or this other, you know, class, you all go through the COSA then for that each year, correct? So if you go through the COSA for that, and the COSA came up and it was outside of that 5%, wouldn't there be some kind of precedent set that if we're outside of that 5% for other rate classes that, I mean, typically, then the expectation is that you would bring that back and bring a rate increase proposal? Or is that not?
So by convention, when there is a rate class that is outside the 5%, we will typically bring that back to the board and recommend a correction. There are some cases where we don't do that, like the case that we've talked about today, where there was a particular customer class that was impacted by what we think is a short-term COVID economy impact, for example, and we felt like it wasn't necessary. But typically, if we had a rate class, and in fact, we've already done this with the Upriver customers, where it was 14%, we would typically bring back that we felt that would need to be adjusted. So yes.
Okay. I'm just kind of putting my mindset in, in next year, when we're looking at this and rates get brought back. Now, again, I mean, I look into the future and think we're, it's still going to be more expensive, it's going to be even more expensive now that we're, you know, doing this other restoration work. For me, it seems like we're probably going to be an even larger stretch or larger difference next year. If we wait to set it up, it helps spread some of that burden to an area that's been really devastated at the same time. It's an area where now we're spreading all of that burden in Eugene. Now, we've already decided, I think, you know, this year, based on not setting up a rate class and not doing a rate change for this year, that we're okay with that given the circumstances. I mean, I think that that's sort of implicit in saying, you know, if we chose to not do a rate increase this year, given the circumstances. But for me personally, when I think out next year, these people are not going to be in a much bigger recovery sort of situation. So I think when I, maybe what, you know, others are struggling with too, is just that, will we feel like we're in a better place next year or in future years to kind of look at this without having that lens of the fire? For me, I don't personally think we do. I mean, we can, I could, I guess I could support potentially making the class, but at the same time, it's just going to set us up for this same conversation next year, where I feel like we'd probably push out doing any sort of rate adjustment. And I'm not really sure it's worth that to put staff through all that rigmarole without having an outcome that really changes the mixture at all. That's my two cents.
All right. I just want to take a quick temperature check. In terms of time, we are, I don't know, five or 10 minutes over the time that we allotted for this discussion. It's an important discussion, so I don't want to cut it short, but I think at this point, if we want to continue, then we ought to have a motion for an additional, whatever it might be, five or 10 minutes.
Move extending five minutes, 10 minutes, excuse me.
Second?
All right. All those in favor of extending 10 minutes? All right, fair enough. And if you'd put those 10 minutes on the clock, all right, we will then continue on with round two. Does anybody else want to jump in? Go ahead, Dick.
To me, this is kind of a distinction without a difference. We have other ways of collecting data on this class by zip code or other means within our billing system, so I don't consider that a big issue. I think that really does what Sonya was suggesting, which is really set this up to be revisited next year, and I, without asking, I suspect that's part of Frank's strategy here. I also will take a dig at my friend, President Maital, and say that maybe since we aren't able to take action on this year, this is a way of giving one of the prime champions of this whole rate strategy something to take home as we come to our last meeting next month, as short of an actual rate change. So those would be the only reasons that I could see to move this forward. I think it will be perceived generally, once our Upriver customers become aware of it, as a setup for an action that apparently we otherwise would have taken this year. And for that reason, I think we ought to hold off and make sure that it gets revisited with the new board, and I certainly would defer to that new board to have whatever conversation you need to have and come to whatever determination makes sense, as we'll no longer be part of it. But I do think, as Mindy said, it does feel like we're jumping the gun a little bit and signaling something that I don't think we've yet really taken a vote on, so I would certainly support holding off on that.
All right. Well, thank you, Dick. John Brown, go ahead.
Just a question and concern. Number one, Mindy, I've been in your position my first four years, was at the at-large position, so I understand about representation. But I also have a question, that there's this perception that all our Upriver customers were negatively affected through their electric service through this. But Frank, of our 2,300 customers that we have in the Upriver class, how many were lost power because of the fire? That were adversely impacted of our customers?
So if you look, Commissioner Brown, there were 430 homes that were lost. Not all of those were E-Web. I don't know the exact number. It's just an estimate that would be half of those, because some of those were in Lane Electric's territory. There's about a little over 3,000 residential customers in the Mackenzie Valley area in total, so I'll just say a few hundred out of 3,000.
Okay, thank you. Because I'm kind of on the fence going either way with this. You know, I understand that we could just set up the class, we're not going to do anything, we set it up again next year, but I don't want to give the impression that we're going to create an economic hardship for those people, because they're not going to be, you know, out of the 200 homes that were adversely affected, because next year, they're not going to be out of it. It's just going to be a long, long process, and I don't think by raising... And I don't think by raising their rates, you know, right now is the right thing to do. I'm glad we're not doing that. So I'm going to wait to hear what others have to say on this.
All right, thanks, John. Anybody else like to speak to that or any other issue? All right, well, we have just a minute or so remaining. We are not, we are here tonight to provide direction, right, to to staff, the actual vote on the 2021 budget and all the associated issues that go along with it as scheduled for next month. But of course, it'd be nice if we could give some clear direction to staff now. Dick, maybe you're going to help clarify that issue.
I'd like to make a motion that we defer the implementation of a separate rate class for the reasons that have been discussed here, at least for the sake of giving clear direction to the staff for what they bring back in December.
Thank you. We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion before we take a vote? Okay, well, in that case, all those in favor of Dick Helgason's motion to, I think, essentially eliminate the creation of the upriver rate class for the 2021 budget, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 All right, we, okay, and those opposed say nay. Nay, it carries four to one, so that's pretty clear direction for Deborah and Steph. All right.
We appreciate that direction too, by the way. Thank you.
Yeah, just making sure, Deborah, before we close this one out, is there any other issues that you feel like you need direction on in order to finish off the budget for next month?
No, I feel like you all were very clear, and all of these things are for approval next month. So this was not approval on any of that, but we will remove the Mackenzie Valley customer class from our proposal next month.
All right, well, thank you. I believe our next item is a break. Ann's already put five minutes of which 30 seconds is gone, so we'll be back in. That's all right. What the heck, okay, Ann gave it back to us. Right, we have five minutes. See you all in five minutes. You might remind yourselves to turn your cameras and audio off during your break.
So you'll see that we, you've seen our draft white paper, which is, I think on, you saw it in your packet, and it will be published on our, in final form on our website later on. So, next slide. So when we were here in August, what we described for you were our preliminary results, as I indicated. And it's just, I guess, the important thing to say tonight is that the preliminary findings remain true. What we did, though, is we built on the analysis that we presented to you in August. On an annual average basis, we discovered that even high levels of electrification appear to be manageable to the utility. And by manageable, I mean that we will have opportunities and time to adapt our portfolio and our infrastructure as required to meet loads that might be presented to us through electrification. It's a 30-year analysis, and so there's a lot of uncertainty in that, primarily due to adoption rates. So a lot of the future building and electrification is very dependent on technology. In buildings, we talked about a wide impact on our load from the use of different electric technologies like heat pump efficiencies and other technologies. And finally, we mentioned in August that electrification in our service territory is really one pillar of many that can achieve decarbonization. And so, next slide. So what's new is we, in eight weeks that we have had since we talked to you in August, we really continued to refine our assumptions in our data. We did that primarily by engaging with some key stakeholders in the community. That includes the City of Eugene and Northwest Natural Gas on this study. And this is an important caveat with that. There are still differences between and among our respective organizations about what the impact of electrification would be on our community. But we believe that the conversation will be helpful to us because it helped us understand their perspective and maybe allowed us to adjust some of our studies. But we feel that the results of this Phase One study are solidly presented, and they are independent, and they are reasonable. But they represent EWEB's opinions only, not necessarily the city's or Northwest Natural Gas's. We also completed our analysis of commercial building electrification. Last time we were here, we were just talking about residential and electric space and water heating, but not commercial. We added commercial. The impacts are smaller than we would expect in the residential market, but they're still important, so they are in there now. As promised last time, we have studied the impact of electrification on our extreme peak. When we were here in August, what we showed you was the impact, potential impact of electrification on peak under average weather conditions, the 1 in 2 typical winter that we could expect. And in this case, what we did is we looked at a more extreme winter presentation, a 1 in 10-year impact on our peak strategies. So we've added that. As Frank says, you can't fly through the mountains at average altitude, and we can't either. There is, in this paper, additional discussion, if you have time for it, on regional policies, how they could be an accelerant of electrification in our service territory. More discussion about what the portfolio impacts are now that we have added peak under extreme conditions to this study. And lastly, we will be looking at some mitigation strategies. What we mean by that are strategies that EWEB could use to mitigate or reduce potential peak load impacts from electrification. Next slide, please. So this shows you cumulative load impacts from high electrification in our service territory under typical weather or average weather scenarios. The gray bar is our typical system load under average weather conditions, and you can see it does not change much up into 2030 or 2050. And that's because we continue to assume that we will meet most load growth with conservation, and so that is offset quite a bit. But one thing that's changed most, based primarily on our discussion with Northwest Natural Gas, is that we have refined some of our estimates of how our load would be impacted by electrification. Last time, we showed you an impact of 55 average megawatts by 2050 under high electrification scenarios. And now what we're showing is 64 average megawatts by 2050, again, based on refining our assumptions with Northwest Natural. Next slide. This is where you'll start to see the impact of unmanaged electrification lows on our peak. This is unmanaged because this just assumes that electrification that comes from EVs or electrifications of homes and residences would be not necessarily optimal. The black line shows unmanaged peak impacts that could occur. By that, I would mean if electric vehicles all came home at night and charged at the end of the day, that would tend to push our peak load impacts up. Same would be true if people were installing suboptimal heat pump technologies. That really has an impact on the peak load. And what we discovered is that with unmanaged electrification, it adds about 275 megawatts or a 50% increase to our extreme peak scenario. Next one. So this shows you how we could manage peak load impacts with the right programs if electrification would occur. The orange shaded area shows you the additional load that would happen in high electrification of building scenario, where gas and space and water heating are replaced with these technologies that are better suited for cold temperatures. And the blue wedge shows you EV load that would be added to the system under an extreme winter 1 in 10 peak. Only this time, we have attempted to manage charging. In other words, we would have programs that would incentivize consumers not to charge at the worst possible times, but rather shift the charging to a time period that is more optimal for our system. And what this showed us is that we are capable of reducing that extreme 1 in 10 winter peak load impact by as much as 100 megawatts by doing some of these management programs. Next slide. These are Sankey diagrams. Sankey diagrams are great ways to understand the total fuel cycle and what that means for purposes of carbon reductions from electrification. You start reading these from the left-hand side, and the left-hand side shows you all the fuel inputs going through the various processes and what happens to that fuel as it goes through the process into the right-hand side, which is to achieve the end result that you want to achieve. And if you can look at that, at the top, the power to wheels figure, that ribbon that's up there, that's what we're trying to do with an internal combustion engine car, right? We put in gasoline, and we are trying to create power to the wheels to move the vehicle forward. And what you can see from this slide is that there's an awful lot of waste that comes from the use of petroleum fuels and internal combustion engine. This analysis includes waste from upstream production, but between that and waste heat from combustion, that does not result in moving the vehicle forward, means that there's a fair amount of carbon emissions from this approach to vehicles. And you'll see that we think that there would be 3.6 metric tons of carbon equivalent associated with a standard gasoline engine. And by the way, this is assuming a typical car that you would buy today, it would get about, on the average, 35 miles per gallon, and it would drive over 12,000 miles per year. Next slide. This is a comparable document, only it shows you a Sankey diagram for an electric vehicle. Again, moving from left to right, this shows the emissions that you would get from a single electric vehicle traveling about 12,000 miles per year. Because EWEB's power source is from a very clean portfolio generally, we wouldn't see the same effect as if we were using a regional combination of fuels. There is still some fuel in the region from natural gas and coal that goes into generating electricity. And what this shows you is that with all of the effects in the electric generation, the heat loss from electric generation, line losses, moving on to the right, and electric vehicle efficiency losses, what it results in is total carbon emissions from an electric vehicle right now of 0.84 metric tons of carbon equivalent. So that's quite a change from the gasoline vehicle. That's about a 75% reduction in carbon emissions by converting from gasoline and internal combustion engines to the electric vehicle format. So every, every switch from a gas vehicle to an electric vehicle would reduce carbon emissions by 2.75 metric tons for the switch. Next slide. This is our cumulative carbon reductions that could be expected from an electrification event in our service territory. We showed you this last time, and what we showed you last time was only the orange wedge. The orange wedge represents the carbon reductions that could be achieved by assuming of high electrification scenarios. High, in this case, means an 80% conversion of residential and commercial space and water heat by 2050, and that electric vehicles would reach 45% of total vehicles on the road would be electrified. We just showed you that orange wedge, which is where that comes from, but we also mentioned last time that really electrification is only one of many strategies to reduce carbon. And so we tried to layer in here our alternative, additional, not alternative, additional carbon reduction strategies that occur from other sorts of decarbonization strategies. The gray wedge represents the improvement and reduction in carbon that you could get from the fact that gasoline vehicles will improve in their efficiency over time. Using CAFE standards, the miles per gallon will probably increase over time, and so you can see that that would contribute to reduce carbon reductions in our service territory. The blue is just assuming that we gradually green up the grid, and then ultimately, we're, we have an electric grid that is, has zero carbon in it. So you can see that what this does is it takes us to the point where it would help meet 34% of the city's carbon reduction goals by 2030. And continuing on this path, it could help the city reach its Climate Action Plan 2.0 by 50% by 2050. Next slide. So this is kind of a summary slide of where we are right now. We, there were so many questions about electrification and EWEB's role as a utility in electrification. Part of electric supply planning is understanding what may happen to our loads and how that would impact our portfolio over time. So we, this is work we needed to do anyway, because electrification could have an impact on our loads for purposes of our planning our portfolio into the future. We would have needed to have done this work anyway, but I appreciate the fact that the board gave us this opportunity to study this on a standalone matter, because it gave us the opportunity to develop the planning tool that we think we are going to need. It's a very solid data-driven planning tool, and we're there. So the bottom line is, from all of this, that we are well situated, and it probably shows also that we are strategically moving in the right direction as a utility. We have an obligation to serve all load as it presents itself. But now we know that we have enough runway and time to adapt our portfolio and our infrastructure as necessary to meet this challenge if it presents itself. So in Phase Two, which will begin next year, shortly in 2021, we intend to do a few other things to add to our Phase One study. One is introduce economics. What customers would pay in order to make these choices to electrify would have quite a bit of an impact on how much electrification actually happens, and we're trying to, we need to understand that. There was a very wide jaw of potential impacts in the Phase One study, and if we introduce a layer of economics and customer choice on this, we can probably narrow the jaws from low to high into something that's more clear to us. We will also have the opportunity in Phase Two to explore the role of EWEB's programs on electrification, like our energy efficiency programs and the sorts of programs that could help time the use of energy into more appropriate times. And we'll start modeling alternative futures, including taking a look at how the regional energy grid changes over time and how that gets green. Another important thing that we'll be looking into in Phase Two, this is for Rod, is doing a deeper dive into our distribution infrastructure. Electrification doesn't impact just our portfolio and our planning from that standpoint. It's also about poles and wires and substations, and so we'll be taking a look at how electrification could potentially impact our, our distribution system. Next slide. So I guess the questions for you are whether you have any questions on the Phase One study, on the assumptions and conclusions. Can I open it up, Commissioner Metal?
All right. Well, thank you for that. Looks like Sonya is eager to jump in the queue. Go ahead, Sonya.
So can you go back to the slide with the climate goal and the reduction of, I think it had 18 and 25, there we go, that one, thank you. So this blue line down below the red dotted line represents the Oregon adopted goal, and the green line that's well down here is what the City of Eugene climate ordinance is. When I look at this, I think of the, the amount of carbon that comes out of these three areas as being kind of our biggest buckets to really impact, you know, change. And I still see a huge gap in between the green line and where we're at. Now, I know that we don't have full responsibility over the entire, you know, City of Eugene climate ordinance, and there's a portion of that that we can affect. But my initial kind of, I don't know, shock here is that it's not enough. This is really, I mean, this is really helpful for me to be able to see, and I appreciate you putting the report together, but we're not even close as a community to hitting these reduction goals. You know, we're starting out here, and we're starting on a divide, and it's, we're making an impact, but it's, it's not close. I don't know if there's other, if you know if there are other partners involved, if at some point, staff could help me kind of see if there are particular segments that the city views as, like, this is in EWEB's camp, and this is in, you know, whatever, this is in LTD's camp, or whatever different agency or government groups that are involved, business community involvement, I'd love to see where those kind of sectors are. Because if they're just relying on us to hit everything, we're not there. And I, and I don't think we're, you know, that, that entire burden should not be on us, but this is, is not there. So anyway, thank you for all of the work. This was really enlightening, especially this graph for me.
Go ahead. Oh, sorry, Susan, did you want to respond?
No, I was just going to ask Frank if he wanted to respond. I think it's important to see.
If you wanted me to.
Okay, thank you, Megan.
Yeah, no, as you recall, we went back and we talked about the four pillars of decarbonization. And we're really, we've added some examples in here of what might be some others. But we're, we're, the city is looking at much, a much broader set of ways that they're trying to meet their goal. A couple of them that I can think of off the top of my head is trying to get people out of cars completely and into bicycles. They also were talking about electrification of the heavy-duty freight transportation that's not included in land uses that we studied right now. Also, the reduction, there was reducing the waste and fugitive emissions. That was about 15% of local emissions. So that just gives you a flavor of what the, some of the other ways that the city is looking at to reach their, reach their goal.
Go ahead, Mindy.
Okay, thank you.
To piggyback on that train of thought, I don't know how to get the city to come to us, but I know that Frank has offered many times to share these reports and to give a presentation to city council. But I'm just wondering if it would be possible for somebody from the city to come and talk to the board about what their strategy is. I know that, I know they work closely with EWEB staff, that you probably have a lot of contact with them, but we're being asked to weigh in on these kind of board-level things without kind of understanding, like, the whole landscape of what's going on. So I don't know if that's appropriate for us to ask them to come to us, or if that would be possible. That's one question. And then I just have two other quick things is, if there is a change in government from the upcoming election, and if, if there's new policies that come from federal and then maybe state level too, will that impact kind of our forecasting? That was a question. And then the third one is, I'm just kind of curious, maybe this is in the weeds a little bit, but how do we account for new technology that might be around in 2050? So like, EV charging might look very different, or maybe not. Those are my questions.
Good.
Well, thank you.
Sorry, Susan.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm going to let Frank ask, answer the question about having the city come to us. I wanted to talk a little bit about the potential for new federal policies and new technology. With regard to new federal policies, obviously, for most of us, they would be welcome if there is a change. But the point of this study was not to actually forecast what those might be, but to make, to create a tool for us to study what the impact might be. If there is a change, and there's a great deal of additional incentive money or programs that are out there at the federal government, at the federal level that would enable some of this electrification, we have the tool now that we can use to understand what would be the impact on our portfolio and our infrastructure from that. We didn't have that before. And so the purpose of this tool is not necessarily to drive programs, per se, but just to understand how programs that are out there, like the city's programs or federal programs, would affect our portfolio. We have an obligation to serve all load that presents itself. And of course, we strive to do that at the least cost that we can, given all the other constraints that face the utility. But we're just trying to really, with this tool, just understand what might some of these policies do. So if there is a new federal impetus, we have the tool now to be able to study that and understand it. And now I'm going to be quiet and see whether Frank wants to add anything.
I'll add a few things. Thanks, Susan. There's, there's a couple of things in just that, we really started out with the purpose of this to be to assess electrification's impact on us. It wasn't to promote a particular position, or whether to say that, or to align, for that matter, with other assumptions that have been made by the city, or Northwest Natural, for that matter. And so the fact that there's differences in assumptions are probably understandable. We looked at the ones that we thought were most impactful to us, which is both infrastructure, as well as time of use and, and impacts on resources. We do expect that at the state level this next year, some type of 100% clean legislation will be introduced, driving further decarbonization of the electric sector and potentially the gas sector as well. We also expect if there's a change at the national level, at the, at the presidency or in Congress, that federal programs and federal standards will also be in play over the next one to two years, which could potentially impact further decarbonization. And then technology. It is fair, and we haven't, we haven't run all of the scenarios, that you would say that the, the electricity sector is going to clean itself significantly over, over the next 30 years. And that's, that's a fair assumption. We know that many of the coal plants are being closed. We know that clean energy standards are being, continuing to evolve that affect the electricity sector. When we say that, we also think that the fuels sector, so fossil fuels, so for example, natural gas, will have a less fossленess to it over the next 20 to 30 years as well. There is the potential that it could be synthetic by 2050, as opposed to a fossil fuel. And so the nice thing is that we can model those different scenarios, and we can take a look and say, what's the impact on electrification? That's our system. But then what kind of carbon benefit do we think we're getting for that, for that impact? So I think it's fair to say there's lots of assumptions. We made some different assumptions than Northwest Natural on one hand. We made some different assumptions than the City of Eugene on the other. And so, but we felt like we, we made the assumptions that helped best us answer the question is, what is the impact on EWEB for various degrees of electrification? And I would also add, it's only in those two sectors. It's only in the, the light transportation, and it's only in the residential and commercial water and space heating. We didn't look at industrial, which is a significant one, very application-specific. We didn't look at buses, for example, which may start to use fuel cells and hydrogen and other, other technologies. So those are all on the table as well, and those are all gaps between kind of where we are and, and where some of these carbon objectives head. So there's a lot of moving pieces, and I think we have some tools to be able to run more scenarios going forward.
I'll jump in the queue, and then I'll call on Dick. Sorry, Dick. Yeah, thanks for the presentation. And my, you know, look at the thing, when I see where our efforts might get us under the various scenarios of, you know, low, medium, and high adoption of EVs and heat pump technology, you know, that's all based, based on, more, mostly on voluntary adoption rates, which are hard to predict. And so what I see when I look at those are really gaps in policy and policies that are beyond our, our own power to enact. We don't, as far as I know, you correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have the ability to, you know, follow suit with what, let's say, the City of Berkeley did, and, you know, put a moratorium on new gas in the city, or to eliminate, to require houses to rip out existing gas lines and replace it with electricity. That's a pretty, you know, bold and aggressive measure, and maybe folks want to take that up. But that's not something we have the power to do. The City of Eugene would have to do that, and then we would have a duty to serve. So it's just, and I'm not advocating at this point one way or the other. I'm just getting really clear that what you're showing us is what we can accommodate under more or less a voluntary standard. If, if the community at large says that that's just not enough, the answer is essentially that there's policy shortcomings that need to be addressed at the state or federal level, or perhaps a local level to some extent. And then our job is to figure out how to, how to meet those. That's how I see it. Have I misunderstood that, Susan?
No. No, President Mattel, that was the way I understood it.
One other quick question that I had, just because people are interested. So we're not taking on the electrification of buses in the study right now, but doesn't that largely happen over on subs network, on their distribution network? Isn't that where LTD buses go to recharge each night?
That is presently where they go to recharge, President Mattel. If there were another technology such as clean hydrogen, where you had a fuel cell vehicle, which is becoming more and more feasible for large vehicles and trucks and buses, then that could be wherever they decide to make it, wherever the infrastructure can support it. But presently, you're right, they recharge for the most part unless it's an in-route charging, but that's minor. It's in Springfield.
Okay, well, thank you. Dick, go ahead.
So this is all good work and quite meaty, probably worthy for, you know, a candidate for work sessions, but I'll try in my three minutes to give you my thoughts. Susan, when you sort of summarized, you said that, something along the lines that your conclusion was then that we, you know, looking at all of this, that we're well situated and strategically aligned to, to address, you know, the implications associated with electrification in the areas that we've studied. I would just caution that for those that advocate for an aggressive role on E-Web's part and even more aggressive strategies to raise the adoption rates, that they're going to read that as E-Web saying as a result of their Phase 1, that there's really no problem here, that they've got the capability to take this on and ready to do whatever it takes to make it happen. I think that would go a little beyond, you know, what we're really able to conclude here and probably a little premature. So that's just one thought. I worry a little bit about the projections in kind of a load resource balance context. I appreciate that we are surplus now and that we have some capability to meet load growth with conservation, at least on an average energy basis. But I also know that our resources decline over time and that I just haven't had a chance to look at our load resource balance 30 years out to really see what that looks like and kind of wondering if at some point we're going to have to replace something. But I'm most concerned about the peak implications of what you're showing there. And this is very good work in terms of exposing something that could be problematic for us, particularly in the unmanaged cases that you've talked about. You've counseled us, all of the staff, over the last several years about the looming peaking problem on the system and kind of when that becomes a strategic concern that motivates things like time of use rates and all of that. I think, you know, a several hundred megawatt increase in our peak loads potentially in an environment that you've kind of presaged on the peaking front could be really problematic and costly. And I just remember a time that the industry engaged load building and we ended up thinking that we needed five nuclear plants and the rates went up. And so I'm really looking forward to, and we'll kind of sit on the sidelines and look toward the work that you're going to do in Phase 2, because I think that'll begin to expose, you know, what it means in terms of cost for customers, for conversions and/or incentives that we might have to pay to move things along this trajectory and/or implications for our portfolio relative to particularly peaking. But this is all good work and I just, for me, it's a little premature without the results of Phase 2 to conclude that this is all great and we had a gung-ho, go for it. And I just kind of worry about what the long-run implications are of all this load, particularly on peak, that potentially could manifest. Looks pretty good in the short term when you're surplus, but good work.
Commissioner Helgeson, I just wanted to respond really briefly. I certainly didn't mean to leave the impression that there's no issue here and that E-Web should be all in. I was actually trying to say the exact opposite, so that says something about the way I addressed you all. But what I was trying to say is that we're looking at how would the utility respond and how could it respond if this electrification presented itself? And all we're saying is that it appears as though we can manage it from a resource standpoint and a time standpoint. We have the ability to adjust. We were making no recommendations about policies that E-Web should pursue to encourage electrification. That's not our role and that wasn't what I was intending. And I would guess I would also say that the questions you're raising about peak and what does that do to our portfolio are very good ones. And those are the kinds of questions we answer in an integrated resource plan. Now that we've got this information and we know how loads could be affected by electrification, especially peak loads, we'll have the ability to examine a portfolio, a long-term portfolio for the future and what that might look like.
Well, I appreciate that response and I certainly understand from our perspective and knowing what I know about the planning work that staff is doing, how that all fits together. I think there is a danger, as I read sort of at a high level the report, that others from the outside might conclude that we're saying that there's no, no concern here. But I do appreciate that that's not your view or staff's view and there are unanswered questions in a portfolio context. I think until some of those questions start being answered, it's going to be hard to fully embrace this and really know what it means for E-Web and its customers, particularly if we're expected to incent this the way we have in the past conservation or other, other things. But thanks for this work. It's good work.
All right, just want to remind all of us that we are good, oh, I don't know, 40 minutes behind schedule, just as a reminder. But if there are additional questions, we will continue to take them on this topic. John Brown, go ahead.
Thank you. I'll be brief. Maybe I missed something, but I recall that Frank said a while ago that in the next four to five years, we had a high probability of brownouts because of the decommissioning of the fossil generators in the region. And is that a true statement? And if it is, how does that play into this scenario? I mean, along the line of Dick's questioning about adequacy, especially during peak periods of time.
John, to answer that question, I would not say there's a high probability of brownouts in five years. What we have are the reliability metrics and the safety metrics that we apply towards reliability in the region are deteriorating because of the shutdown of, it's both the shutdown of the coal plants and the prospect that our hydro-based system could be further eroded through environmental challenges to it. So there are reasons why we need to be cautious about this, but it doesn't mean that we're at a high probability of brownouts. It means that we are getting into a risky planning environment. I wouldn't call it a risk of a brownout, though.
Okay, I don't, I, it was a 40% was the number I recall. Maybe I'm wrong.
I would say, I would still say that based on some of the numbers we've seen, I would disagree a little bit. I would classify it that there's some risk that we would have to take action as a region on the load side, either shedding load voluntarily or other things. But that's the resource adequacy program, which is going on separately, that Susan's part of and Megan's part of, to look at the metrics, look at how energy flows under different conditions and look at the impacts on hydro and curtailment or elimination of coal and other things. So there is still a danger in my view that some type of load action or pricing action will have to take place if we don't come up with a different type of approach to it.
You know, this is Megan.
Good questions.
Oh. Can I just add? I, when looking at, I think Susan mentioned earlier that we have this, we have this tool and we have these capabilities. And so if we were to see any kind of policy change that was being introduced, as Frank even mentioned earlier, we would be willing, we would be able to look at that and take our tools and then we would adjust accordingly. And that's what's pretty nice about this, is just knowing that we have that ability when something is proposed and we can look at the results.
All righty. I think we're going to move on to our next topic unless anybody's got a burning question. All right, thanks to Megan and Susan both for the work and whatever other staff assisted you. We really appreciate it. All righty, next item for business is the quarterly strategic and operational report. It's not quite our penultimate topic, but we are getting close, Frank. We could put 30 minutes on the clock. And I suppose if there's any chance we can get it done faster than that, everybody will be appreciative. Go ahead.
I will do my best to accelerate the presentation portion of this. Thank you, President Mattel, for the record. This is Frank Lawson, General Manager. Pleased to be able to report the third quarter results for the commissioners. You'll notice on this slide, the very left side of the picture shows the Roosevelt Operations Center. October marked the 10-year anniversary of when we moved into the Rock. And so just wanted to note that, I remember it well. I had just joined the utility and packed up my things and moved to the Rock. So 10-year anniversary of the Rock. Go ahead with the next slide. As part of the update, commissioners, you did receive roughly a 70-page report on the utility and its operations for the fiscal year as well as the third quarter. The third quarter was really marked by two significant events. The ongoing pandemic and also the Holiday Farm Fire up the McKenzie Valley. From a pandemic standpoint, we did see our first reported COVID cases at E-Web. We had at one time eight people who tested positive and 18 who were quarantined. As you can see on the very right side at the bottom, we are down to now zero active cases and zero people being quarantined. And so that's good news and reflective of a lot of the procedures and policies that we've put in place. We're still seeing some economic impact on the electric side, about a 4% decline in electric consumption that can be traced to the COVID economy, I'll call it that. Delinquencies or disconnect service orders, it's actually, that number of 590 is now lower. That's actually down into the 517 account range. That's as of today. So we're continuing to work on providing services to customers, options to pay. That's about not quite double what we historically see. So it's still elevated, but we're offering a number of programs. We've given out over a million and a quarter dollars of customer assistance to almost 5,000 people this year, which is roughly double what we would do in a typical year. Go ahead with the next slide, please. The Holiday Farm Fire impacted 430-plus homes. And at present, we, as of a few weeks ago, actually, we restored all of the electric service to structures that we were able to restore to that existed. We have also worked with Lane County and others, our communications, technical staff, restored communications to Mount Hagan, which is the shared system with the state police and Lane County Sheriff and also is our, part of our link to Carmen Smith. Have to give a lot of credit to BPA. They have restored the Carmen, the transmission line to Carmen Smith and also to Cougar. And we started our watershed recovery efforts almost immediately after the fire had been contained. You can see the, on the picture there, the Northwest Youth Corps assembling some wattles. That's for erosion control. Also, there's a dashboard in the upper right-hand corner with a lot of different layers to it that we've created with ElCog and some other partners that show hazardous homes, which burn assessments we've done and which residences or premises that we have restored and stabilized the erosion with. We're shifting from stabilizing to now we're working with the EPA on the removal of the hazardous waste from the area. Go ahead with the next slide. Besides really looking at the COVID and the Holiday Farm Fire, we continue to have good safety performance, good reliability performance. You can see that the safety numbers on the electric side, the SAD, the frequency and the duration of outages is continuing to run lower than what would be typical on a five-year average. The safety record on the upper right shows that total injuries are still about half of our three-year average so far this year. And also our preventative work, what we call our good catch reports or the close call reports, those are significantly up. So employees are reporting opportunities to proactively address safety issues. We've come up with some tools that allow people to text in information and others, and that's, that's all helping. The financial situation has been kind of unfavorable for the electric utility. There's a number of reasons for that. Some of it is mostly driven by retail consumption. The closing of Willamette Industries was part of that. The COVID economy was part of that. The 900 million unfavorable, that's based on the difference between making a deposit to reserves versus taking a withdrawal from reserves by the end of the year in net. That's a forecast for the end of the year. We're about 2.5 million unfavorable at the moment relative to reserves. The water utility is quite favorable. Consumption has increased. You can see in the lower right corner that where the red dots are is where production levels for treated water were at so far throughout the summer. And those are, those are high compared to even a typical summer. So next slide, please. Relative to strategic progress, goal number one, really keeping everything flowing, from the lights to water to information for customers to keeping the financial flowing. We really had to prioritize goal number one in general this year. And so that's, that's continuing to be on track. You can see quite a few of our strategic goals are still on track. We've made progress on a lot of the goals, you know, in the midst of the two major events. We've continued to make progress on, on a majority of those goals, including AMI, the CEI project. Those are both progressing. We did, we had a goal from 2017 on goal number four, to do five emergency sites in five years. We're now reaching the end of year three and we have five and maybe a sixth ready for completion. The COVID environment has put a little bit of a damper on our sort of celebration and socialization of those sites. But we did implement those sites as part of the Holiday Farm Fire response. There was a time during that fire that the evacuation zone was within about 1,000 feet of our water treatment facility. And so we were looking at emergency response as part of that. And so that was, that was turned up. The other goals, electrification, Lower McKenzie, some of those are behind simply because the outreach has become a bit difficult under the COVID environment. But we continue to make progress on those. So other than that, I guess next slide, please. One final comment before opening up for questions and comments. Again, there was a pretty lengthy report. I would, you know, like to thank President Mattel and Commissioner Helgeson. We didn't do anything like this at, I think, the beginning of your tenure on the board and have appreciated a lot of the feedback that we've gotten on this through the last few years. And so this has really turned into what I think is a good way to present where we're at with things. But, you know, this is, this is the last time you'll have to sit through a quarterly or read through a 70-page quarterly report if you don't want to. And so I'd be happy to answer any questions that commissioners may have about the status or staff is in the wings as well, if you have a detailed question that you want. or staff is in the wings as well, if you have a detailed question that you wanted to ask about what things are going on at the utility. Steve, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that. Thanks for pointing that out. First up in the queue, John Brown.
Dick, real quick, Frank, looking at your community investment Q3, we had about a quarter of a million dollars go to the schools for the education programs, but it has no events or anything. And we gave them the money in July and there's some other things. What is that for if they're not having school and not having these classes and things? Where's that money going?
That's a good question, Commissioner. I'll have to follow up on that one and get back to you. I, knowing what schools are doing now, I would anticipate that they're doing more online outreach and virtual work with that. But I don't know how a field trip can be virtual necessarily. So I'll follow up. We'll get back to you on that one.
Thank you.
Anybody, go ahead, Dick.
Frank, thanks for pointing out the progress that's been made on these reports. I'm always reminded about how much work actually goes on in the organization, even in a COVID-constrained environment. I worry a little bit about, I know when I was having to prepare these kinds of reports, there was a lot of sort of administrative overhead and time taken in staff preparation and reporting out of all of these results because they're kind of a roll-up of a much more detailed look that I know that you guys maintain as part of your management process. How are you feeling about this working on the staff side relative to, you know, administrative burden?
You're asking me and not staff, so there might be a different answer. But there's, there's a couple of things. First of all, it is a pretty significant amount of work. But one of the, you know, part of our refinement is to try to align the work with what we think has strategic value. So the responses are really geared toward the goals that we have, of which we should be doing this work anyway. So trying to align more and more between what's reported so that it's not an unvalue-added burden, but it's part of managing projects. It's part of managing the objectives. And so we'll continue to refine that. Sometimes we measure too many things. Sometimes we don't measure enough things. And so we're continuing to balance those. But the refinement we've made most recently has to do with trying to align what's reported with the, really the status of the goals that we're trying to achieve. So, and we'll continue to refine that.
Well, you make a good point and that's where the value added is. It's not just a matter of doing the work. You got to evaluate how you did with the results and it's a big piece of it. Thanks for your report.
Thank you.
Mindy or Sonia, either of you have questions, comments? Okay, I don't either, actually. I'll just open it up to Dick or John in case you want to go for a second round. All right.
Nice try.
Not trying to, not trying to do anything, just making sure that everybody had their questions answered. Sarah, thanks for the report, as always, Frank. And I will just say also, yeah, it is a, it is a really nice process. Not just the report itself, but the process, the frequency, and ultimately sort of the view that it gives senior management and the board into what's going on is just incredibly valuable. So, you know, much appreciated that, you know, hats off to you. That's evidence of your leadership.
Well, hats off to staff who does all the work. They do a great job, commissioners, to compile and understand and make it relevant. And so there's, there's a lot of things that go in behind it that make it worthwhile for those who participate in it.
Yeah. All righty, we will move on here. We're almost done. I think now we have the penultimate agenda item for the evening and that's the Correspondence and Board Agenda. So Frank, you're still on for that.
Yeah, the Correspondence item this month, commissioners, mixed in amongst all of the other 296 pages was an update on the Carmen Smith project. And so I am sure that Mike McCann or someone else is in the queue for updates, but it was pretty thorough. I don't know if you have any questions on that.
Comments, questions about any of the board packet items that didn't get addressed directly during the meeting tonight? It's like it's that time of the night then there, Frank.
And then seeing none, you know, the only other thing was that the future calendar coming up, we did push off. You'll make note that we, we have sort of pre-scheduled the McKenzie River Valley meeting for late April. So that's, that's on the list. And then we have a number of other things coming up at the beginning of next year, including the, the work on the watershed restoration, as well as some other things related to property and other such items and AMI and goal setting and a number of things.
All righty, fair enough. Final item, board wrap-up. We'll just take it right down the lines. Go ahead, Sonia.
Quick question. January's meeting is typically where they do the swearing-in ceremony as well. Is that something that we can, we can do virtually at this point? Or is that something that people have to actually come and be in person for? I don't know what the rules are around that. If there's any statutory requirements on it.
I'm not sure, Commissioner Carlson. I'll have to take a look. I, I'm not sure.
Good question. We'll have, I mean, Sonia's making a good point. There's three commissioners that will need to be sworn in in January. Sonia's up for reelection tomorrow night. I think it'll go pretty well. I don't think she's facing anybody and neither are the other two candidates. But all three have to be sworn in, so we should probably get clear about that procedure given in January.
City Recorder will know.
Yep.
All righty, I think it's items from, or board wrap-up. Sonia, why don't we start with you, if there are additional items beyond that one?
I don't have too much to add. Good meeting tonight. I know there's a lot of work that staff put into this. And I do have to say that I'm getting quite nostalgic because, you know, this is the group that we've been with for a better part of my time here. And seeing that there's only one more board meeting and we can't even really celebrate is, is a little bit heartbreaking to me. So I'm, I'm really going to miss serving with you guys. Okay, I'm going to go off video so I don't get ulteriorized.
Thank you, Sonia. That's very kind of you. Go ahead, Mindy.
I don't really have much to say. Good meeting. It's probably our longest one in the COVID era. And thanks to the staff for all of your hard work because I know that there were a lot of very meaty reports tonight.
Well, I'll just say that I'll come down and give public testimony once in a while next year if there's a blueberry cheesecake as a reward. So just, you know, there you go. Go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, knowing how much we've all appreciated that one, the others have shown up. I'm not sure that I'll do that or not, but blueberry cheesecake is an enticement. I just had a point of clarification, Frank. You said earlier that we needed by statutory requirement to open and close the public hearing. I'm actually not aware of any statutory requirements that bear on the board's process for rate hearings. I think those are self-adopted and self-governed. But you are correct that we have a procedure in place for conducting our rate hearings. It does require hearings and that that was the mechanism that would allow that to be shown in the record as a matter of adherence to our own policies. So I think you were basically correct, but not as a matter of law, but as a matter of board policy. And with that, I think I'm done for the evening.
John Brown, go ahead.
Well, thank you. Great meeting and thanks, everybody. I just, two real quick things. I agree with Mindy's request to have AMI on the agenda. And when you guys are setting the agenda at the next meeting, you may want to get that on the calendar because we're going to have a pretty full load in the first quarter of next year with the new commissioners and everything else we've got. The other thing is, I know historically in years past, we've done a kind of a little tour of the McKenzie in different areas. It may be timely to schedule one now for next spring or early summer. You get everybody on the schedule. If people want to go down in the river on a little float like we've done in the past to see, see what it really looks like. Because I think the perspective from the water is totally different than it is from the highway. And we can see what's going on and what advances we've made from now until then. So if others want to do that, that would be something that we should be thinking about. Thank you.
All righty, well, with that, I think it's probably time to close out the meeting. I wish you all a peaceful and happy election night or week or month or however long it takes. See you in December. Good night, everybody.
Good night. Hey, Steve.